Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting for the February 8, 2016 work session for the York County School. We have several presentations this evening, so I probably ought to go ahead and get going with these. I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Shandor right away here. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Dr. George. Board members, good evening, everyone. This evening, we have quite a few presentations. We're going to start off with Mr. Doug Mead. I'm going to ask him to come to the podium. He's our Director of Information Technology. He's going to provide an update to our strategic plan pertaining to a Goal Two objective relating to digital resources and a Goal Four objective relating to open data.
Good evening, Dr. George. This is Heywood, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I'm going to update you on two strategic plan initiatives relating to digital technology. The first one relates to digital resources, specifically the goal calls for digital devices per student, faculty member, the wireless and wired networks, bandwidth, storage capacity, and the overall technology infrastructure. In the past year, we've done quite a lot in these particular areas. To start off with, this past year, we did an RFP for all of our telecommunications services. We had to do a new RFP. Our contract was at its end, and we have to maintain a current contract for rerate purposes. We moved from Verizon to Cox Services this particular year, and when we did that, we made several upgrades to our overall bandwidth. Specifically, we upgraded the bandwidths at both Tab Middle School and Yorktown Middle School from 100 megabit circuits to 1 gig circuits. We upgraded the connectivity from Grafton School Complex from a gig to 2 gig circuits. We upgraded Tab High School from a gig to 10 gig, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about why such a change at Tab High School later on, and the school board office from 1 gig to 10 gig. Now, just so you have a little bit of a lingo background, because I'm going to throw around megabits and gigabits and terabits quite a bit tonight, so just to remind you, we don't talk about kilobits very much anymore, and we're not yet talking about petabits, but we will eventually get there, or petabytes. But mega is basically a million of something. A giga is a thousand more than that, or roughly a billion of something, and a tera is roughly a thousand more than that, or a trillion of something. So we're getting into some pretty large numbers when we start talking about these bits and bytes. Our internet, we converted, because of that RFP and the new contract, we converted our internet service from Cogent to Cox Communications. And at that time, we upgraded from a single gigabit connection that was out at the school board office that serviced the entire school division to 2 gigabit circuits, one at the school board office and one at Tab High School, and those 2 circuits are now load-balanced for the division. By that, I mean, some schools use the school board office as connection to the internet; some schools use Tab High Schools to balance the load between the 2. But if either one of those 2 primary sites should fail, then the other side will pick it up, and the connectivity is never lost. So it gives us both a load-balanced connection and some built-in redundancy. That's why we have the upgraded bandwidth at Tab High School. A little bit of perspective on the internet. So back a mere 6 years ago, we were at 45 megabits per second, and we have steadily grown this year, going from 1 gig to 2 gig circuits. Now, I will point out that there is a forecast out there from a group called the State Education Technology Directors Association that has forecasted that by 2017, a school district the size of York County will need 15 gig to the internet. You might look at that and say, "That's quite a colossal jump from 2015 to 2017," and it does seem pretty sizable, but in those 6 years there, we went up by a factor of 44. That's only 7.5, and in the past 2 years, we've gone up by a factor of 6.7. So as these numbers get larger, it takes a much smaller factor for us to see quite a significant jump. I'm not sure we'll need 15 gig by 2017, but we are certainly on the rise for our bandwidth needs across the school division. In addition, we did some major infrastructure upgrades. We replaced 160 physical servers with 104 new physical servers. We're able to reduce the number of physical servers because of the increased processing power we can get in newer equipment, and we also engineered some consolidation in the way we are deploying resources to the school, concentrating more things in a central location and having things less spread out, so we were able to get more bang for the buck. But at the same time, we did increase from 200 virtual servers to 300 virtual servers. So just for your information, a physical server is just that. It's a physical box. I can take you into a server room, and you can lay hands on that server. It has a power supply. It has a motherboard. It has a processor. It has memory. It's a physical thing. A virtual server is the, by the benefit of some software running on that physical server, it's like, in every way, shape, and form, a physical server, except that multiple of these virtual servers can be operating on a physical server simultaneously. So when we have applications or services that expect to run on their own server, and in the past, that meant separate boxes in the rack, now, we can run multiple services on one piece of equipment, but they think they're running on their own machine. We also doubled our storage capacity from 200 terabytes to 400 terabytes. We replaced 830 iStation desktop computers across the division, and we built that secondary data center. So that's a major piece of ongoing work at Tab High School. Ultimately, in addition to internet services, basically, we expect nearly every application and service that's provided through the school division to be load-balanced and redundant between Tab High School and the school board office. If there was ever a catastrophic failure at the school board office, then the entire division would continue to function out of Tab High School, or vice versa. We've also deployed this year Office 365. Office 365 is giving new opportunities for student and teacher collaboration. It provides student email accounts. It provides class and staff notebooks that students and teachers can avail themselves of that opportunity. It provides 10 copies of Microsoft Office per student or teacher that they can download to their home or personal devices. And Microsoft actually gave us a grant of $17,500 for the integration of Office into our own network. So it was actually, will be integration between our active directory, our network accounts, your login into the school division will be integrated with your login into Office 365. And that is actually a fairly complex process, and Microsoft recognizes that and is promoting school divisions to do this, thus the grant that they are offering us, or have given We continue to see increased usage in our wireless network. Last year, we were seeing approximately 7,200 devices on a daily basis. This year, on December 16, we did peak out at 10,274 concurrent connections at one moment in the school division. So we see that there's quite a lot of use of our BYOT and wireless technology that we've made available to students and teachers. And at some point, that does probably need to top out, because there's only so many physical devices students and teachers are going to carry in. So, you know, I don't think we're going to continue to see the significant increases we've seen in the past. And we continue to support a significant number of applications out there. There are over 400 applications. These are just some of the highlights, some of the bigger, more well-known names of applications that we're providing support for in our access-anywhere, anytime, any-device infrastructure. We provide a great deal of support for testing, ensure everyone knows about standards of learning, the SOL testing, but really, SOL testing is just the tip of the iceberg. We're supporting the Algebra Readiness, the CertiPort, industry certifications, OnTrack, the Phonological Awareness Literacy, Working in Supportive Education, Virtual High School End, of course, Virtual Virginia End, of course, and the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And we already know of a couple of more that are coming next year. So the list for online testing continues to grow and is very dependent on all of our technology, infrastructure, and resources. We provide a lot of technology support for our STEM initiatives in the division, including the Lego, AutoCAD, the annual Code-A-Thon, other after-school coding clubs, and the Cyber Patriot competition. Once again, I like to talk about the value proposition of what this brings to our teachers and to our students. And last year, in our customer satisfaction survey, we added some questions about that value proposition, and teachers gave us some very good feedback. This year, we asked the same questions, and we got even better feedback. Basically, about the same number of teachers admit to working on a daily or weekly basis from outside the division, but we had a 7 percentage point increase in teachers that say it makes their work-life easier. We had a 6 percentage point increase in teachers that say VDI improves the way they teach, and this is one that I'm very proud of. 18 percentage points, teachers are changing the way they're assigning work to students because students now have access anywhere, anytime, any device. And just so you know what kind of activity we're seeing, this is a little graph of the activity during non-student day. So this was winter break, December 19 through January 3. And pretty much, there was never a day that it was zero. It did get pretty low on Christmas Day, not a surprise there, but you can see that there was activity in the system throughout winter break and after the holiday itself. Those lines began to climb, and the weekend before we returned after school, returned to school, you can see they start to go up quite significantly. In fact, we had over 1,100 virtual desktops launched during winter break, people coming in and doing work in the school division. And understand, 1,100 desktops, that's sort of a different measure versus just connection. So people could have been connecting and not actually launching desktops. So those are actually 2 different statistics that I'm showing you between the graph and that number. And in fact, back a couple weeks ago, when we had some inclement weather just before exams, once again, we see a lot of activity with people, both students and teachers, availing themselves of the resources they can get access to from anywhere at any time during these high, during these peak periods of activity. And I think we're doing it well. This past year, one of the companies that we do a lot of technology work with called Citrix, they have an annual national conference called Synergy, and they started this year with their, an education track, and they invited us to come and talk to them about what we were doing. And their logo was Mobility Transformed Business, but we were actually there talking about Mobility Transformed Education. And we were, I wanted to say in good company, but I think you could say we were actually in great company, because there were 4 presentations this year at Synergy in that education track. One was a joint presentation by the universities of Florida, Central Florida, and South Florida. One was a presentation by Georgia Tech. One was a presentation by Indiana University, and one was a presentation by York County Schools. So the things that we're doing, I think, show that we're committed in doing a good job for our students. We got a lot of recognition for that after the fact. V Journal, and the V is actually what it's called, but it stands for Technological Horizons in Education, they did a feature article on us after the presentation. Then they invited us to be recognized as one of their Innovators of the Month. They did a webcast interview on the presentation in July. They had a education talk radio interview in August, and then the magazine itself had another article in August for their Innovator of the Month. So I think we were getting some good recognition for the things that we're doing for our students. Any questions on that particular initiative?
I've just got 1 question. Tab High School's become a site now to back up the school division site, and they can, one goes down, the other one picks up. What about our schools north? I mean, we got that clear separation of where most of our schools is in the county. In some areas, even real dense, but then you travel north and things kind of stretch a little bit further. How do they feed down just through the technology of Cox or?
Through the technology of Cox, and if you think about it, everything is connecting back to a Cox central office. So, and that's basically Virginia Beach. So it really doesn't matter whether the school, a Bruton school is connecting to the school board office, or Tab High School, or a school in the Bruton Zone, they're all following the same Cox path. The important thing is to give them 2 places to connect to. They don't have to be in close geographic proximity.
So we don't have a fiber optic ourselves that run that connection?
Not that we own. We lease it from Cox. Yes, sir. All of our connections between all of our sites, and I say that, there's a couple of exceptions. For instance, Dare Elementary School to the school board office, we have fiber, we own our own fiber there. And the maintenance complex and York High School complex, they're all internally fibered, and then there's 1 connection back to Cox. But for the most part, all of our high-speed connections are leased connections.
Yes, sir.
I had a question about the number of devices or concurrent connections, 10,274. We have a public Wi-Fi, so some of those connections are coming from parent volunteers or parents at the pickup line before and after school, or at Bailey Field, or soccer field, or whatever, outside. Is there some kind of radius where neighborhoods who are next door to our schools cannot access our Wi-Fi?
If they can find the signal, if they can pick up the signal, it's possible that they can. Now, we do not design our networks to reach outside of our buildings. If you find a spot that it's available outside, it's just the internal dynamics of the building and the radio signals and where they're getting to, but we don't design for that. If you were getting good Wi-Fi connection on Bailey Field, it would surprise me. I'm not saying it can't happen.
It can. I've done it before.
It can happen under certain circumstances, but we're certainly not designing for that. So that is always a possibility, yes. And there's actually school districts in the country that design for that to be an after-hours internet resource to their community, but we have not taken on that initiative. We don't design for that.
I just wondered, do you see any advantages to having a password, the need to have a password, so it's not public? Are there any advantages as far as saving bandwidth or security?
It's certainly not an advantage from a security standpoint. We are very secure. When you're on our public access Wi-Fi, the only thing you can do is go to the internet. That's it. You then must have credentials and login to get to any YCSD resource on our network. So from a security standpoint, no. You know, there's pros and cons. There's organizations that do different things to try to get people to credential on. They may have a, for instance, I know 1 university that they have a wide-open wireless network, but you can't get to Facebook if you're not logged in. So then, it drives people to log in because the one thing everybody wants to get, so they do little tricks like that, but if you make it so that the only way to get on is to be logged in, then you create some other headaches for yourself, and you end up with people now, for instance, when school is closed and we have elections, I've had the Board of Elections call and say, "We're seeing your network. Is this true, and we can get on?" "Yes." Well, now, these people wouldn't be able to get on if they didn't have a log on. So people in the community that can avail themselves of that resource would then be trying to manage that access. So.
1 last question. I know in past years, when we've had SOL testing, the schools have, you know, been very careful, "Don't get online. Don't use your telephone," because they're afraid they'll get knocked off if they're testing. We didn't seem to have that problem this year, did, is that correct?
We tapered back that message. Yes, ma'am. And all I will say is, that's always going to be a case-by-case. We look at it. If somebody does something that starts eating up a lot of bandwidth, and it's not necessarily the people connecting on the Wi-Fi, it can be people on the local land using a lot of internet bandwidth that can change that situation, and we may have to change that. But this past year, we seem to have enough bandwidth that we did not need to put out any warnings about that.
Another quick question that has to do with the growth, the demand of your terabytes and megabytes and gigabytes. Infrastructure that we're leasing, Hampton Roads, I assume, can keep up with the demands of a school district as it continues to grow and the need for more bandwidth. Are we good in that area? Are we going to all of a sudden come to a point where we need more than what the local infrastructure can provide?
I don't foresee that in any time in the near future. When it comes to fiber optic connections, the telecommunications service providers seem to be well-equipped and capable of delivering high-speed bandwidth in this area. We're very fortunate in that regard. You can read articles about, even in Virginia, in the western part of the state, rural areas. You can go out west in the heartland, and there are still schools using dial-up. I mean, we have a lot of infrastructure here, and it meets our needs. Could we always use more? Sure. I would design our video surveillance systems differently if we had all the bandwidth in the world, because that's a high-bandwidth-driving application, and so we need to put that into each individual building instead of centralizing it. Bandwidth was not an issue, you could engineer it differently, but we have plenty of bandwidth available to us right now.
I'm going to wait until you finish, because I think you may very well answer my questions as you move on.
All right. So the second initiative I'm going to talk to you about has to do with our Open Data Initiative, basically making this information about students more available to students, parents, and guardians. And as you recall, last year, we opened up the Aspen Family Portal, which was the big technology that we could use to achieve this particular goal. We see a lot of success with it. In June, we wrapped up the school year. 66% of all of our students had at least 1 parent with an account. We actually started measuring and realized, we realized about that time that really the measure we want is grades 3 through 12, because there really isn't a lot of advantage to the primary grades for this. So we started measuring, and we did a little estimate based on where we were in June with the overall, to estimate we're about 71% grades 3 through 12. And you can see, it steadily increases, 71.3 up to 77.7% as of the 1st of this month. So we continue to get parents logging on, creating accounts, and using this technology. We see that teachers are still our most significant user of this technology. About 49% of the pages accessed are by teachers. However, students are using about 30%, and family, parents, guardians, 19%. So students and family are at exactly the same percentage as teachers, 49%. So we see a lot of good usage of the system. This is a weekly graph, so it's, for every 7 days, it's the total number of pages accessed. And you can see, the lighter color line is the parents/guardian group. The darker line is the students. And do take a note over there to the left at that scale. That's 20,000, 40,000, 60,000. On the week of November, November 3, it was around 100,000 page hits for students. Clearly, we have lots of students going in there on a daily basis, parents going there on a daily basis. If 1 parent logged in 4 times in 1 day to check 4 different grades, then that would constitute 4 hits. This is a cumulative total, but you can see the kind of activity that we have in the system. I will point out that things like interim reporting periods and grade reports don't seem to cause any corresponding spikes, and in fact, there might be a bit of an observation that you see a little bit of a spike on the students a week or so before the marking periods. So they're out there checking things out before the end of the marking period to see where they stand, but it doesn't seem that it just suddenly causes a spike when we announce report cards are available. Again, some of the challenges to ever get universal adoption of this is, there is some minimal value for the primary grades, and we know that there are a lot of instances where students share information with their parents. The parent doesn't need the parent's own account. The parent could say, "Show me your grades." Student logs in, shows the parents the grades. They're getting the same information, but they don't have an account for us to say, "Oh, we know that this child now has a parent with an account." And that's always going to be the case. And so that's just an update on the Aspen Family Portal for that initiative.
Question. I believe we rolled this out there, we sort of wrote it out as kind of a pilot year, and then we said it's capable of doing a lot of things that we want to do in the future and add to it. Can you talk a little bit about maybe some of those things that we've been able to implement and add to the Aspen system itself, and maybe some things that you still want to report, want to do?
Well, this year, we're pretty much using the system as we used it in the initial year. There are conversations of things that it can do, to what extent. We want to talk about those tonight. I'm not sure, you want any guidance there, Dr. James? What all we want to put out there as to what it could do.
I guess from the standpoint that, you know, it was definitely a little more, it was a bit of a learning curve for a lot of the folks, a lot of the families, but the idea was, well, this is, in the long run, is going to be a much better system for us. You can do a lot of things that the old system couldn't do. So I'm just curious as to where we are with that, and what, maybe, what a couple of those things are, maybe you could allude to that quickly.
All right. One thing we were able to do last fall, student schedules for secondary students, to have those available before open house, before school opened. And so we're still moving along that track. Somebody who's very influential in making that happen at our secondary schools, I know that's something we're looking at. Also, about course registrations, you know, some of that online before you actually sit down with your counselor. I don't know where we are with that now, but that was one of the things we had talked about, to give parents some ability to make a draft schedule before sitting down with the counselor, to make that easy. So that, as Mr. Meade said, there is a lot of potential with that. More familiar, our community, our parents, the students that become with it, then it's going to be easier to roll those kinds of things out.
I'm glad you mentioned that about the schedule, because I heard so many families being very complimentary of YCSD. They were thrilled to be able to have that schedule and not have to run to the school to see it listed.
In fact, I forgot to point out in my graph, you can see that the week before school started, we had 20,000 page hits by students and a little over 10,000 page hits by parents. So they were checking their schedules in Aspen before school started.
They were thrilled.
Right. You know, this fall, we did something different with bus schedules and communicating that with parents. We're looking at new transportation software. I speak, works well with Aspen, and that should come forward, and add some capability, potential there to get more information from parents about transportation because of the robustness of our network.
That's what I was looking for, some things that are working for us in the system.
Couple of questions, if I may. George? And professional development, and this goes back to teachers and staff and professional development opportunities to getting them up to par and so forth. Are there any issues or concerns around that that we have to, we as a board have to give more emphasis to with regards to, are we where we want to be with our teachers ready to use all of this technology?
I am certain that there are a lot of early adopters, and there are people who have, who continue to discover the values of it and move up, move into that adoption and using it. We can see that from the responses, from the surveys. Are there people out there that could use more hand-holding? Probably, that will always be the case to some degree, and we could probably get more utilization from the system by having more opportunities for that kind of staff development.
And I ask that because our ultimate goal, why we put all this money into technology is that is, we're doing this for the kids and their educational opportunity. So do, again, the question has been, you don't have to answer that, I guess, ma'am, but again, do we need to, as a board perspective, put more emphasis on getting our teachers the educational time needed, which ultimately is back down to the bottom-line money? But is there, are we happy with where we are with their staff? And the other question is, you see so much in the news about cyber concerns and the scary things that can happen. You alluded to a few minutes ago about students, if they go on, they cannot get to the internet and so forth. Explain that again. How do we, as an institution, safeguard our kids from jumping out there?
So what I said earlier was, as far as our own network is concerned, it is secure from our wireless network. So there's not an opportunity for somebody who's in a local neighborhood who uses our internet access to put us at any greater risk than in any other set of circumstances. But all of our internet access is filtered. So we have a very sophisticated filtering system. It is integrated with our firewall, and it protects our students and our teachers, and we filter students and teachers with the same filtering patterns so that we can protect them. Does this mean that everybody is perfectly protected from everything? No, because there's a lot of things that pop up on a daily basis that filters don't have time to catch up with. But we do an excellent job, and that has not been a problem for us. So I think that we can be comfortable with where we are as far as that's So, I think that we can, we can be comfortable with where we are as far as that's concerned. As far as other types of cyber risks that are out there, there's things that there's no real protection from. If a student is being stalked in Facebook or some other social media environment, then we're not able to necessarily protect them. If we detect something on the network, then we certainly have a lot of resources to pull information for law enforcement, IP addresses, where things came from, and help. But there is some risk out there in the world of cybersecurity. So...
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Meade. We've got another strategic plan update at this point.
We do. I'm gonna ask Mr. Tony Vladu if he will come to the podium. He's our Director of Secondary Instruction. He's gonna provide an update of our strategic plans pertaining to Goal Four, objective-related secondary guidance program evaluation, approved recommendations, and the implementation of those recommendations.
Mr. Vladu?
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. George, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I'll provide you with an update on the school guidance program objective of the Goal Four of this strategic plan. Presentation will include a brief background, updates to school guidance programs as a result of the school counseling committee recommendations, recommendations and action steps resulting from the work of the subcommittee on counseling programs, services, and resources, and program updates since this last presentation was made through you this past June. Goal Four, the strategic plan states that York County School Division will foster effective partnerships with families and our community to promote positive relationships between and among staff, students, and families. One objective under Goal Four states that a program evaluation of secondary guidance with input from stakeholders will be conducted by the end of 2013. Additionally, approved recommendations will be implemented in the subsequent years. Before I begin this update, I would like to take a few moments to provide some background and context that may be helpful to you and the viewing public. In the spring of 2013, a committee consisting of community members, counselors, parents, teachers, and school administrators was tasked with soliciting stakeholder input, examining school counselor ratios, and identifying counseling best practices. That year, a survey was administered to students, parents, and counselors. Based on the findings, the committee recommended the reduction of the student to counselor ratio. The following year, you approved the restoration of one point five secondary counselor positions and an additional halftime counselor position. These staffing changes reduced the student to counselor ratios to well within the standards of quality and much closer to the American School Counsel Association recommendation. The committee also identified the need for ongoing professional development in the areas of college and career planning, mental health and well-being of students, and technology. Traditionally, ongoing collaboration between middle and high school counselors was identified as a need. Lastly, the committee recommended the formation of a subcommittee to identify services, programs, web resources, and their consistent implementation across the division's nine secondary schools. Beginning in FY15, the subcommittee held several meetings and communicated their progress, communicated the progress to counselors, including school administrators. The last meeting was held this past May and the subcommittee made several additional recommendations. At this time, I'll provide an update on these recommendations as well as the actions taken. The first recommendation was to provide students with academic career planning through the use of six-years plans. This practice is designed to help students map their high school academic goals as well as post-secondary education plans. Prior to meeting with students, counselors met to outline communication protocols to students and their families. This past fall, counselors at all schools met with all ninth-grade students. Parents are invited to these meetings. During the meetings, counselors review course requests, verify credits, graduation requirements, and post-secondary education plans. Secondly, the subcommittee also recommended professional development on meeting the mental health and well-being needs of students. This past November, all secondary counselors, social workers, and school psychologists received nine hours of professional development provided by Colonial Behavioral Health. The training focused on threat assessments, referral services, and mediation between students. Additionally, crisis counseling was covered at these meetings. Since then, all school websites are now linked to additional mental health resources to make them more accessible to students and their families. Thirdly, the Virginia Wizard is an interactive web resource supported by the Virginia Department of Education to help students identify potential careers and select the best colleges in Virginia to provide the education and the skills needed for competitive employment in a selected career. This past fall, counselors met with students through the economics and personal finance classes to discuss careers, and students used the Virginia Wizard websites to create accounts for college and career exploration. Additionally, at the middle school level, the Virginia Wizard is now linked to all middle school counseling websites. Fourthly, to aid with the transition of new and military students and their families, orientation programs were held at every school this past August. During orientations, students were introduced to school staff, provided with their schedules, and given a tour of the school building. Additionally, schools updated their websites by providing information and linking their websites to additional resources. This spring, our schools plan on having additional parent-university sessions for new students and their families. Though we have made progress in implementing this recommendation, additional work will need to be completed through standardized websites, the linking of resources, and consider the use of student-run welcoming committees at all schools. Fifth, we have made some progress in implementing the recommendation by the subcommittee in regards to the consistency of school, consistency of school websites across our secondary schools. Websites now include staff names, telephone numbers, and staff email addresses. Additionally, specific grade-level information, scholarship opportunities, registration information, and transcript requests are available on school websites. Again, this is ongoing and will update our websites as new information becomes available. Lastly, the subcommittee recommended additional help to students and their families in interpreting the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test, also known as the ASAPAP. This test measured the abilities of prospective military men and women and predicts future academic and occupational success. The test is important not only for admission to one of the five armed forces, but it's used to both identify and qualify the student for the military occupational specialty or their choice war, the MOS. The test is offered at our high school two times per year, and now we provide a score interpretation guide to all of our students. Our counselors work hard in serving the needs of our students across the division. This past October, I'm pleased to report that nine secondary school counselors attended the Virginia School Counselor Association Conference held in Hampton, Virginia. Five of our counselors presented on topics such as student-led conferences, the changing role of the school counselors, and developing a success mindset. Some of the other professional development provided to our school counselors at this conference was on changes to the SATs, technology, creating a college-wide culture at the middle school level, and college admissions. Since FY15, school counselors at both the middle and high school level met at least three times annually to share best practices and collaborate with local experts and service providers in meeting the changing social, emotional, and academic needs of students. This year, all secondary counselors met in October and December. Presentations were provided by Mr. Reggie Fox on student academic course offerings to Virtual Virginia and Virtual High School. Mr. Walcross presented on ISAEP, which is the Individual Student Alternative Educational Plan. Ms. Sandy Heskey presented on the CTE and industry certification changes. And Ms. Diana Lindsay from Newport News Behavior Health Center presented on community mental health resources. These meetings provided both middle and high school counselors with ongoing, high-quality professional development by community practitioners and experts relevant for their work with students, and provided opportunities for our counselors across the school division to share best practices. To better induct and provide support to new counselors and those new to their positions, mentors are assigned, and ongoing professional developments provided on graduation requirements, academic programming, college admissions, emotional and academic support, and mental health. Additional opportunities for collaboration between middle and high school counselors are scheduled throughout the year. We value parent engagement throughout the course programming and college and career planning. As an additional update, during the month of March, as well as this month, middle and high school counselors are meeting with students and their families to schedule next year's classes and discuss post-secondary education plans. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present on the work of our school counselors. This concludes my presentation. I am now open to questions and comments.
I just have a comment and a question and comment. We have come a long way in this area, especially at the secondary level. And to hear these positives and to know that this is exactly where I think the board really wanted to see school counseling go in this direction. With that said, with us adding an additional half position here, a position and a half there, kind of to, you know, over the years, just putting the right staff in place, my question is, where do we go from here? This is where we've been able to achieve some really good stuff. Are we where we should be? Or do we need to still continue to focus in and kind of tweak a few things, I guess? Or do we still have some areas to where we need another level of staff positioning and especially at the secondary level in the schools, in the high schools especially? Just next steps for us as a board?
That's a great question. We're never done. We always look at improving the, you know, the services to our students. And this past week, I've been in buildings just seeing the work of counselors. I mean, it was really, it's hard to, you know, to actually get to see them because they were parents and students and it was really awesome to see them and their work. I think our ratios have gone down quite a bit. I know at the high school level, we're about, you know, three oh seven to one and middle school about the same, but maybe a little higher. I think they're busy folks. I mean, I saw their work and they do great work, but we could always improve. Our schools right now and their websites, you can see that they're a whole parent universities. I was in one of our middle schools and this past week, and they had, it was a Thursday night when it was raining. I had about ninety parents of fifth graders that are coming to the middle school to start, you know, to have a presentation for New Horizons Counseling and learn about their schedules and how that's gonna differ from the elementary schools. So, I think there's a lot of work to be done. But particularly, we need to standardize among our schools. We still have to do some work in the standardizing of websites and of resources. And also, I would say, our next area of growth is to involve students in the welcoming committees. I think kids sometimes need to listen to other kids and when they come into a school to be shown around, I think as adults, you know, we're kind of missing the boat, don't involve kids a little bit more.
I know they find that successful at the college/university level of the upperclassmen that will do most of that guided tour stuff and introduction to the schools. But I guess also too, and another page may jump in on this one, but the career tech side of things. More and more industries out there, the demand for students to at least give it a consideration to receive some of those certifications or industry standards or just a career path that may put them at a community college or maybe put them on a different path, but they receive something that our society is starting to need in the industries and career tech fields. Do we need to find a way to ramp that up? I mean, we have counselors that'll work in their cells, you know, really tight with their scheduling, three hundred and some odd students per counselor. But the career counseling side, should we have somebody that can do something in that area, I guess, with our high schools?
Sort of a mindset on that. I know the highest need in Virginia right now, manufacturing. Who would have thought that ten years ago?
Right.
That manufacturing is the highest need. So, there's a little bit of a mindset. I think Virginia Wizard does a great job in that. You take an assessment and you find out what you really predisposed to like, and then identify colleges in Virginia where you might be interested in. But it's an area of further exploration. I think we all have to wrap our minds that we have college and career ready. I've been focusing a lot on college readiness, which is great. There are other opportunities as well as the economy really diversifies and we look at what the job market looks like and what those opportunities are for students across the spectrum. So, I think we need a little more work in that area.
And if I can add, we are very fortunate through our relationship with Thomas Nelson to have a career coach at York High School, and that is funded through Thomas Nelson through a grant that they received. And that individual works with our other high schools because we don't have the opportunity to have that individual at multiple schools.
That was probably going to be Barbara in my next question because we really like to offer the same services at all the schools.
And so, that individual does work with the counselors in the other schools. The other thing that I would share is New Horizons does a great job. Typically, every January in the past, I'm not sure whether they had it this past January, they typically have a breakfast for school counselors to come into their program to talk to them about their programs to keep them updated. So, they are, they are really good at sharing information with the school counselors as well in terms of services and programs.
I think one of the biggest concerns from the New Horizon side that we live in a community, not only our community, but other communities, that parents, their kids are gonna go to college, are so college-driven. And do the counselors half the time explain, "Look, here's some great opportunities." They go, we're heading to college, our kids can utilize these skills, great career tech, learn how the real world works and how to apply certain things and, you know, go on to the academic side too. And I think that's always been something I watch, is, you know, counselors are driven so hard and they have so many students that deal with, you know, based on per counselor. How do we get parents educated on the fact of how valuable career tech education is today as opposed to what it was thirty or forty years ago?
There are a lot of those opportunities. I think obviously, time is our greatest resource. We know we need more time and I think the ratios, although they've gotten better. I know when, and I just observed something this week, it's actually a sit-down meeting where the child and their parents sit down with the counselors and it's about fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe even longer. They're not rush meetings. They take as long as they need to. I don't think any longer than a half hour. But so, there is that opportunity to do that, but I think there's also opportunities throughout the year at assemblies. I know when we welcome parents into our buildings, so, welcome back to school nights. I think there are a lot of opportunities throughout the year. It shouldn't be a one-time thing. It should be done throughout the year so folks can get that information. But it is sort of a mindset, I think you need to hit the nail on the head when you said, "We've gotta change our mindset that we're sometimes so focused on, you know, post-secondary." We should be focused on that, but there are other options for kids as well in our, in the industry and manufacturing. And so, how do we educate folks on those opportunities in an ongoing way that makes sense and doesn't, you know, take away from what we're trying to do, provide opportunities to kids at all levels?
And just to piggyback and just the fact that I had a local business person contact me a few weeks ago and said, "Need you to come by and see me?" So, I went by there and been in the county a long time. And his concern was the fact that in the auto body repair, you just can't find anyone. There, the market out there, students preparing for that, you know, get-your-hands-dirty kind of job that pays quite well once they get their mentorships done and they're actually, you know, in the job doing it on their own, is, the demand is, he says, is across the entire peninsula, if not beyond Virginia. And so, there's multiple stories like that out there, whether it's HVAC, auto body repair or auto mechanic, I mean, auto tech. There's a lot of opportunities that we can just find a way to introduce, to say, these are other things that students can do if they choose not to go this way or be able to identify a student that may have a desire to do something. not to go this way," or be able to identify a student who may have a desire to do something other than the college track.
If we change, we change a lot, because, well, two things. I agree with Mark, number one, we have come such a long way with counseling overall, and the whole idea is we need to maintain what we have and build on it, not go, not reverse and go downward. So kudos, and whatever it takes to keep us where we are and then to build on that. But to Mark's other comment, I think there was a shift at one point, that we weren't pushing post-secondary across the country. You push, and that's what you want people to go into, versus finding that niche that that person is comfortable, whether it be post-secondary, whether it be career and tech, or whatever the case may be. So we are now making almost like a one-eighty, where before it was, "You're going to go to college. That's what you're supposed to do." And there was a slack off in career tech. I think it was welding, that was another area that they couldn't find anybody to.
Like Tony said, it's almost like parents and families and the students have to do the research to see what jobs are going to be available in four years when they graduate from. They get a degree in something where there's no market for it, they're sitting there going, "What am I going to do? I got college loans. I have nowhere to, you know, how am I going to pay them? Because there's nobody out here." And they end up working, selling, you know, cars, or doing something entirely different that's not on their career path. So to be able to, for us to assist forecasting that out, for students to say, "In four years, this might be where we find the opportunities."
We offer so many different things, different, from different programs that could lead to jobs, or maybe two years in college after they graduated, they take this New Horizons program or that one. And I often hear from seniors at the time of graduation, "Oh, I wish I had taken that course at New Horizons because it would have put me ahead." And, you know, then it's hindsight, but you want to hit that before they're ready to graduate. I had a question about the ASVAB. I don't really know much about the test, but I have heard wonderful things about it, and it's not necessarily for the military, but can help students figure out their strengths and weaknesses and possible career fields. Do you know what the participation rate is for our students?
I do. We had approximately three hundred and fifty students across our division take it last year, and it is quite different than any other test. I take it that way back, it's probably changed a little bit. It does sort of...
It's changed a lot.
It has changed a lot. But it is different from any other test that students have taken. It's not like this, in terms of, it's very applicable, in terms of, they might have a diagram of the bullies, and they'll all move in a different direction, and it's about how you force it. So there are a lot of multi-step problems, but at the application level, they're great because if you're going in the military, and you, for instance, you want an MOS, an MOS, whether it's flying aircraft, or some technical aspect, that that score will really help you have that career that you want to have. So sometimes kids may have the opportunity to work and study for that test.
Is there a fee for that test, do you know?
I don't believe so.
It's free?
I was sitting at my guidance, this past Friday, with one of three hundred students at the guidance council, I mean, it's about students and parents to kind of get things, make sure we're on the right track, and looking at scheduling and all that. And I was having a conversation, and it just dawned on me, I mean, everything we're talking about is the academic, you know, scheduling, career planning track, but what happens when a mental health issue has to come in, you know, the school counselor? I mean, do they, do they just put everything aside in terms of, you know, the academic part and just deal with that? And at what point do we call the school counselor? And I don't know, these are questions. And I'm wondering also, do we have any kind of, any research data that would show us, are we getting more and more mental health issues, however you define that, and who responds to those? I mean, what is the line between, this might be, I don't know if I'd be used to it, but the line between where a school counselor, where a school psychologist takes over from that health issue? Because that, I think, is going to get bigger and bigger, and all this stuff is great that we're doing, but that's the whole other side of it, you know, these folks, how much of that are we expecting the school counselors to do? Can anybody elaborate on that, or I'm going to put you on the spot. I just know, I'll answer your first question. As far as safety records, first and foremost, so, we will drop everything to help a child that's had that needs and our assistance. So having said that, the counselors, in reviewing the records for the past several years, have reported that this is a need, that they're seeing an increasing number of mental health concerns. So that's why they've asked for that training that we're fortunate to be able to provide to them. And we don't want this to be a one-time deal, we provide the training to you. We want to do some follow-up to that training, and based on the needs that they're having. I know we have a meeting with them in May, certainly we could ask them about how things are going and get some frequency numbers, or how often are you seeing this changing trends? But certainly, they have asked for this for the past, I would say, several years.
And we do have a threat assessment protocol that's utilized. I believe in, Dr. Gould is right behind you in case I missed it out, but I think both the school counselors and school psychologists can administer the student threat assessment protocol. So typically speaking, a school counselor might be involved in that initially, and then depending on the concerns that are expressed, a school psychologist may be brought in as well. And then we have outside resources that are available for students and families, particularly that are in crisis.
So you kind of shift your whole, you know, shift gears completely with your day.
Absolutely, and that's what happens in a school.
And I guess the others...
It's more the norm than the exception, in terms of...
Maybe the other three would take up the slack, or, I don't know, it's not an easy task, I know that, but...
They wear mini hats.
Yeah, but I will say that the climate was really great, you know, they feel really kind of about some changes that have been made. I asked him specifically, "Do you feel like you and your staff..." Kudos to everybody for that. I guess we'll look at, look at more of this when budget time comes, see where we are with positions of school psychology counselors. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we're going to move into a discussion on attendance zones. You ever heard of that?
Thank you, Dr. George, board members. This evening, we're going to, we want to spend some time this evening reviewing the attendance rezoning process, in particular in the York zone. So Dr. James is going to lead this discussion. We have a brief presentation, but he's going to work through some.
Dr. James?
All right, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Dr. George, board members on the board, tonight I'm going to share some information with you about the rezoning process as stated in file FB, Facilities Planning of the York County School Board's Policy Manual. I'll bring your attention to a map that we've shared with the York community and staff, and the McGruder community and staff, about new development and the effect that it has on our schools. As you can see from the chart to the left, there is an impact on schools. You see Walla Mill forty-one, McGruder a hundred fifty-eight, Yorktown a hundred thirty-five, and Grafton Bethel seventy-five additional students. These are based on county projections. As you know, we are experiencing sometimes numbers greater than that, and that does cause us some concern. So tonight, I'll talk to you and bring to you a recommendation about how to address some of the increase in enrollment at Yorktown Elementary School. But first and foremost, in your policy manual, under file FB, Facilities Planning, the section there talks about the process for bringing forth recommendations to the board for rezoning. There are two possibilities. And looking at the policy, I decided to break it out into two options, option one and option two. Each process, each option has a very distinct path, of how a recommendation will come forward to the board for consideration. So the first one would be, what the superintendent, you could direct the superintendent to bring forth a recommendation regarding changes to attendance zones. Especially this one, you would have what's known as public forum, before the board, at a regular board meeting, to bring forth recommendations from a community meeting. The first step in this process is one to host a community meeting for the Seaford Zone and for the York Zone, because those are the two zones that are going to be affected by this recommendation that's going to come forward to you later on tonight. So with that, after the committee, after the public forum, community meeting, and then a public hearing, then a recommendation will come forward to you. That's one process. This most often is used when there's a small area under consideration. The second part is do the committee approach. We have a more broad-reaching rezoning process in place, and this would be to assign a committee to study all of the issues about rezoning, bring forth recommendations, and have those recommendations come to the board, and then hold a public hearing on the information that's gathered through, or a recommendation from the committee about how to address increasing enrollment, overcrowding in any particular school zone. Sometimes it's going to be one school, two schools, sometimes it may be several schools when this happens. The last time we had a big rezoning committee was when the Grafton High School, Grafton Middle School opened, and how we would then address students from what was then the York Zone, and then the TAB Zone to form the, of course, the Grafton Zone. So that was part of the last process, and as you know, that was back in the mid-nineties before Grafton opened. We've done a smaller one since then, and that was at the Naval Weapons Station. As you know, students from the Naval Weapons Station attend Yorktown Elementary School, McGruder Elementary School, Queens Lake, York Metal, York High, and Bruton High, from the same neighborhood. But of course, one of the board's goal has always been to have an identifiable neighborhood, to the extent possible, attend a particular school. Given capacity issues at Naval Weapons Station back in twenty oh nine, twenty ten, we had to make an adjustment because we had just added additional classrooms, ten classrooms, to Yorktown Elementary at that time. You've seen some data that's shown how enrollment really peaked rapidly at that time, and that was because of the rezoning. So now we're having to go through that process again. What you'll see here on the map, and I'll try to point out to you exactly the area I'm talking about, and this area is known as the Yorktown Crescent. If you'll follow the cursor right here, I'm at the intersection of Old Yorkhampton Highway and Route seventeen. If I follow the cursor, and I'll go along Old Yorkhampton, I'll come up to the intersection of Fort Eustis Boulevard and Old Yorkhampton Highway. And then I'll move on the map, I'm going to go to the left, and so with that, here, I'm going to come around here. Now I'm at the intersection of Route seventeen and Fort Eustis Boulevard, one oh five. And then if I simply go with the cursor back down Route seventeen, you'll see that I'm right where I started. You'll see some diagonal lines in this presentation. So with the diagonal lines, the diagonal lines here, that's representing the area known as, or where it's going to be a development called Yorktown Crescent. In the green is the Seaford Zone. Just above it is the Yorktown Zone, that's sort of a beige color. The divided line in this area I talked about, between the Seaford Zone and the Yorktown Elementary Zone, would be the railroad tracks. Part of the board's goal is to have a geographic boundary, identified boundary. In the past, between those two zones, it's been the railroad tracks. Now this proposal is, and you can see the insert here that really defines it much better, is to have the area known as, or common, excuse me, where Yorktown Crescent is going to be located, make it a part of the Seaford Zone. As you can see, it fits very nicely with the Seaford Zone, and it's very easy for transportation and what have you. I can tell you, as we speak, there are no homes or students in that area that attend any of our schools, elementary, middle, or high. So with that in mind, with the zone, any questions about the zone I just described in the area I'm speaking of? So the next part of this, and our recommendation, and this is for board's reaction consensus on this tonight, is to move forward with the first option, which is to hold the public meetings, and then the public forums about adjustment to the attendance zones, bring those recommendations back to you at a work session, with whatever came out of that community meeting, parent meeting, before we go to a public forum and a public hearing. So with that in mind, here's a proposed timeline, this is just a proposal about how we would do that. March one, community meeting. March fourteenth, the work session, session rather, shared community feedback with the school board. March twenty-eighth, conduct a public forum, regular meeting. April twenty-fifth, a public hearing, regular meeting. And then, May twenty-third, bring forth for your consideration a motion to actually move the area I talked about from the Yorktown Zone to the Seaford Zone.
Was it twenty-seven students or...?
The county staff recommendation is that's going to be twenty-seven students from that area. I talked to the developer today. He says to me that we should have students from that zone, from that development in September. His first plan is to build twenty-seven townhomes, have those ready, then move forward with another twenty-seven townhomes, before he'll start to build the apartments. This area should have townhomes, apartments, and live-aboves. Some of the commercial space should have residents above the particular stores or other retail businesses that are in that particular area.
I drove by there on my way to the meeting tonight.
Yes.
And so I've seen where, okay, they've broken ground.
Yes.
And he expects to have homes completed by September?
That's what he told me today.
They got the underground stuff done, so they're ready to roll here soon.
Right, but it's also dependent on weather, you know where we're now with weather, but to me, that may be ambitious. I don't know, I don't know the resources or the particular plan. I noticed when the Commonwealth at York, or Commonwealth Green, those structures were built in a factory, transported, so it made construction a lot easier. I don't know what his plan is to do that. And also, as we may remember about Yorktown Arch, that was a very unique development procedure, to put in the utilities under the slabs for each of the townhomes. He dug it all out, put in utilities, covered it up, and then put in the building paths. So that saves us some time. So I don't know what technique he's going to use, but he did say that to me. And I spoke to him last fall about this, and I spoke to him again today, just to see what he would tell me, and his plan is still basically the same as it was last fall.
Carl, what's the neighborhood that we see on the other side of the street? This, using Fort Eustis as the divider, I know Woodtown Quarters is one of them. What's the other one, the name of that one? One that I guess you'd come off Route seventeen to get to, it's behind the Bojangles?
The new one, Yorktown Arch?
Yorktown Arch.
Yorktown Arch, okay.
And then there's General's Way. If I'm facing Bojangles, that's to the left of Yorktown Arch.
Okay.
They call it the Quarters, General's Way.
Okay, but right now, they go to Yorktown Elementary.
They go to Yorktown.
Okay. How many students are in that entire clump on this side of Fort Eustis?
There's, for elementary, I know there are fifty-some students. I can tell you, when I spoke with the owner of Yorktown Arch, this summer, they were at a hundred percent capacity.
So they're full, okay.
This summer, they were a hundred percent capacity. Now they're about ninety-five point six five percent capacity. They have four units vacant. And they said to me, because of job transfers or what have you, some individuals have moved out, so now there are four units available. So that's rental property, so that's different than, of course, the Crescent, which is homes for sale beyond the apartments, and they haven't built the apartments yet.
What about the other new development that's on the other side of the Crescent?
Nelson's Grant.
Nelson's Grant.
That's the one that's next to Food Line, where you see Centerra Complex, and Three Amigos, Subway, and all of that.
They're still building there.
They're still building. Right now, he tells me they're about thirty-three percent occupancy. He hopes to have another twenty-five units available by the end of the year, and then another twenty-five units by the end of twenty seventeen, and then he hopes to be at full buildout. You know, he was kind of slow in the beginning, but now he's picked up pace. I can tell you, we don't have the numbers of students from that development, of course they're not at full buildout, like the Yorktown Arch is.
I know when we, in the past of, especially the TAB area, where we've had to go in, move boundaries and such, we use major roadways and dividers and things to do so. We've had to do that many a times since I've been on the board. Was there any consideration to look at that part of Fort, that side of Fort Eustis Boulevard, since everybody else in that area go to Seaford based on the chart I'm looking at here? So if you go down seventeen further, everybody else is going to Seaford?
Going to Seaford, yes.
Except for that little part of behind Bojangles.
Yes.
Except for that little part of behind Bojangles and Woodtown Quarters?
Yes.
It looks like a natural fit.
It looks like a natural fit to me, and I don't want to alarm the neighbors and all of a sudden they're, you know, they're going to come knock on my door. I was just wondering if we, how it would be perceived, first of all? Because if we're going to have a meeting, if we're going to go out there and start having conversations about a neighborhood that's not built, do we get feedback from those neighborhoods and parents to say, you know, hey, it's something to consider, what do you think? And be interesting to see what the feedback would be.
Right, I think that's the value in the process.
Exactly.
Of having the community meeting, getting the feedback, sharing it with the board before a recommendation is brought forth to you.
We've always taken, like a rising fifth grader, you know, would stay in the school.
A sibling would stay as well.
Sibling, yes, absolutely. I mean, we've always had, over the years and years I've remembered, we've always built those in place. But for new families or very young, maybe something to consider, because that would be just a natural, that would make Fort Eustis a divider right across the spectrum.
I agree, I've been looking at the maps over the weekend, and that's what I thought too. And I'm also worried, if we only rezone that development that is not completed, how much of the overcrowding is going to actually be alleviated at Yorktown Elementary? Because we have no families there, we have overcrowding now.
This is not, yeah, this is not going to take, this is not going to help immediately. This will kind of preempt a further problem in the spring in terms of 27 more students, correct? Is that the way we're looking at this? So I think the way I'm looking at it, this has to be sort of a starting point in my mind, and I think, I think we need to portray it that way, that this is not the end of, this is just one small piece that we are starting with, and then we know what we're going to have to do in the future. It's going to, we've just got rezoning issues. We've got elementary, we've got elementary school, we've got rezoning issues.
Yeah, and part of it is, where's available capacity?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know, where's available capacity? In the Seaford Zone, there's another development called Osborne Landing. That's just at the very end of Seaford Road, almost where you get to York Point. You know, that development, it's much like the Crescent right now, if you were to look at it, but homes are going to come in there.
How many?
I think it's 16. But how much capacity is available at Seaford to take the numbers that we're just talking about? So you have to, that's one of the considerations that I've been looking at, that, of course, as this will be a part of the process, how much capacity is available at Seaford or any other schools, say even there, how much capacity is available at there? Now, what I can tell you, at many of our schools, there are a number of classrooms, nine, 10, seven, that are useful programs beyond K-5 classrooms. We're talking about special ed, we're talking about art, we're talking about speech, we're talking about reading, preschool. There, for instance, has two preschool classes. Prior to the addition of the six classrooms there, when the trailers were there, that program was there, it was moved to Seaford, one of the preschools programs, to give Seaford enough capacity to bring everyone in house so we could move the trailers and construct the sixth classroom addition. Part of the plan was to move that preschool class back to Seaford where it was originally. Now we have, the other issue we are considering is to add more students to Seaford with this development and another one coming in, and where's the available capacity? Because we may be in another situation if we move too many students, and without the data speaking to me, it's kind of hard to say this is really going to happen, but you may be adding more trailers onto Seaford, or maybe moving the trailer from Yorktown back to Seaford, just depends on where the numbers fall. We don't know, we just have to look at it, but it's a very good point.
That was, you answered the question, I was getting ready to throw out, and you answered it, so you're already, my mind melting here. But I know Yorktown's feeling much more pain. So if we had to do something and make an adjustment on a different area, on a different school, I think that, in my mind, it might be something to consider. Another, my other question was, I wouldn't want to zero in on a neighborhood if we're going to turn around and have to rezone it again.
That's it, yeah.
For the new elementary school. But I see this as probably one that wouldn't be, because it's in this, it would be absorbed in this, that little piece of Seaford. But if we jumped across the street, then that would be an issue, you know, obviously.
Because we do look at all the neighborhoods along Fort Eustis Boulevard, we have some to the right and left. So which ones would you go? Because you have the Quarters, Yorktown Arch, Woodtown Quarters.
Yes, just those, it's right, everything behind?
Yeah.
The Bojangles on this side?
Right, Woodtown Quarters. Because you have Front Bridge, and those on the other side, on the other side of Fort Eustis Boulevard.
And that's a whole different ballgame over there.
Yes.
But Fort Eustis being a divider, but that's just something maybe we want to consider.
Consider about looking at the number of students and recommendations, they include everything along Fort Eustis Boulevard, and what capacity available at Seaford.
Dr. James, I think you can confirm that you haven't lived, do you go through an attendance settlement? I remember when. And whatever happened to the development that Nembie Boulevard, right before you almost get to Newport News, you know that for years, they were going to develop, it was called Pines or something?
Collin, Collin Pines.
Activity back there right now.
They're back there working again.
Activity again.
Right, but I think that was an annexation of property that had something to do with the sports complex was planned. You know, that's now in the city of Newport News, it used to be in York County.
Oh, okay.
Which is in the Dare Zone.
You reached in and grabbed it.
Yes, and that's part of the city of Newport News.
Yeah, they actually put some infrastructure in, they went down and.
It did, you know, they started that, and then they stopped, so now they're starting back again. Because we used to call it, I don't know the name's going to be, Collin Pines York, it's his name, we had given it when they first started to develop it.
Thank you.
You have the two options here, and I have no problem with option one as far as Yorktown Arch, but I almost wonder if we need to do both, because we're going to have to rezone when we build a new school, or when we decide where the new school is going to be built. I'm concerned about Commonwealth Green, because it's ready for occupancy. I mean, it looked, when I drove out there this weekend, it looked like it was pretty much complete, just waiting on folks to move in. They estimate 75 families, it could be more. And I'm afraid that we will be sitting at this table talking about Grafton Bethel next year if we don't do something to tweak the zone for Commonwealth Green.
Right, you're exactly right. Commonwealth Green, that's 300-some apartments in York County. When I spoke with them, when I read that there, you can ride all the way back to the veterinary hospital, right to the corral back there. But when you look inside, they still have a lot of work to do in the very back section. I spoke with the people there too about what they expect, I spoke to Ms. Rufia at Grafton Bethel. Right now, they have two students from that development. Also spoke to them about the rent, it's pretty expensive. Anywhere from 1,300 to 2,500, depending on the apartment, that you have one bedroom, two or three bedroom apartment. But that's something I kind of keep on watching, but you're exactly right, because how does that affect not only Grafton Bethel, but all of the schools on the south end of the county? You know, those four elementary schools there, so that's the process, that the committee needs to look at the overall picture, and then what's best for all of the schools.
I agree, I think option two, when we truly are at a point of moving people, option one, I think, works now when we are moving a development that hasn't been built out, we don't have anybody in it. What terrifies me, and I just don't want us, when we start truly moving area, having given considerable thought to it, you don't want jumping back and forth. So when we get to the point of needing option two, because we're now looking at rezoning an area that we already have families in, hopefully that's going to coincide with whether or not we get the go-ahead for a new school, because that will tell you, are we rezoning now to fill a building? Or are we zoning to put more mobile units up? Then that's going to be a difference with that.
Right, to make it a comprehensive process, because, you know, we talked about some of those in the Yorktown Zone. Rose Hill, they haven't started yet, Battlefield Bluff, they haven't started. And one development I have not mentioned to the board, and that's the townhomes at Martin's Farm.
You keep adding to the list.
Yeah, that's, I was going to ask you about that, I heard about that.
Okay, that's at the intersection of Dare Road and Grafton Drive, it used to be the central golf course.
What do you want to be a bus driver and just put us on the bus and just take us around?
You know, I would do that, sometimes I've done that with the school admin staff, so they have some idea of what I'm talking about, and I say, let's take a ride, let me show you what we're working through, so they have some idea.
60 or 80, 60 or 80 units?
I don't have the number, but that's, it's not active right now, but I don't know when they're going to start.
Any day.
And see, that's what scares me, you may have developments that have the okay to move, and developers are just sitting on them. So whenever the developer decides, I'm going to go do it, then, it can go, it can happen.
Right across Dare Road.
You know where the Redco, right, Drugstore?
If you want to go into Grafton, and you went straight across Dare Road, and then you made a right going to Grafton Drive, that open field there, right, because left of that, you know, that's age-restricted homes. It's like the buildings at Yorktown, that's age-restricted, but this one is going to be townhome, so that won't be age-restricted. And another one I may bring to your attention, that's in the Dare Zone. Constitution Drive. After you pass the Borgen Box, you know, there's a road to your right if you're going Dare Road to 17, Constitution Drive. You know, the plan was, I don't know where they are with that now, is to extend Constitution Drive all the way to Wolf Trap Road, and then put townhomes in there. This is part of the gentleman that has purchased the Grafton Shopping Center, you know, the improvements he's done there lately. So I just need to reach out to him and Tim Cross to see where are you now in the pipeline, because that's also going to be the Dare Zone. So as much of this conversation, talk about a committee and the future implications of that, what can we do now and what do we have to do later? What's the timing of all of this to make that decision, so we don't have to move families back and forth?
And where the new school would be?
Right.
So Carl, if I understand it correctly, there's a couple of things with this, this would, this would align nicely with the new elementary school in terms of the zones, there's no, no going backwards on that.
No going backwards, that would be in the Seaford Zone.
And also, this is a project that will impact as early as September.
I'm told to that, yes.
Okay, and are there others that will impact September in the same way that are close second, or does this stand out because of the timing on it?
No, it's just to continue build out, if the 25 townhomes are sold at Nelson's Grant. And you may also notice that Nelson's Grant, you see something behind the Three Amigos that looks like maybe apartments, but those are condominiums, so those are going to also be for sale in Nelson's Grant. They're going to have to be in real estate.
We may be breaking ground in Kalamck Creek for a while here.
All right, does anybody have any questions before we kind of get, we need to get some direction for these folks tonight. I'm going to start, Paige, what are you leaning towards, which option here?
I'm pretty much in alignment with Boyd and Mark, and I think Cindy said, one of those options, as far as bringing the neighborhoods.
Yeah, just the option one or the option two, one being, of course, the forum, the community meeting, the forum and the hearing, as opposed to the committee.
You're talking about now just for Yorktown Crescent?
Just for this one, yeah. So there's no, nothing built out, we're not moving families, we're just changing this before, before it contributes to the problem even more, so.
Yes, so whereas advertised, it would be advertised in the Seaford Zone, not the Yorktown Zone, because that won't be confusing to families. Go ahead and state it, what we're doing.
Yorktown's.
Where I'm at, Dr. George, is option one is fine with just the caveat of that other neighborhood, you know, cluster there that can be at least thought through and processed. This might not be the right time to do that, but then again, it might be, and to get the feedback from those communities.
But it's Seaford?
Or Yorktown Arch.
Yeah, okay. So, and make Fort Eustis basically the divider, if it is something that's even remotely possible, but option one definitely at this point. Option two, as we find out things get, you know, once we get the new school underway, that'd be a good, we know what's going to happen when that school kicks off, we're going to have a lot of moving to do. Better do it all at one time than back and visit.
I support option one for Yorktown Crescent, to go forward with that, but I agree with Mark in relation to Yorktown Arch, I think that should be explored and discussed. Option two, I know we're going to get to that point, at some point, we're going to get there, but I want to make sure that we're really watching Commonwealth Green as well as the other developments, because I don't want to put Band-Aids on anything and then be here at the last minute, like with Yorktown Elementary. I don't want to face overcrowding conditions at Grafton Bethel this time next year. So I know option two is out there, and we will go there at some point, just be ready when we get to that point.
Dr. James, I know one thing we talked about, I don't know if it was two or four years ago, but the Harwood Mills area, where there were a lot of older families that have retired or gone on or went into assisted living facilities, younger families have been coming in with more children. Have you picked up, I see a lot of movement in some of those houses now where I saw the folks that lived there going, and I see families there now.
Right, you're exactly right. Even in talking to Tim Cross, the county planner, he lives in the Williamsburg area, as we have these discussions, he talked to me about the number of baby strollers he sees as the parents are taking walks. At Yorktown Elementary, that's growth. Yorktown Arch gave us a lot of kids, but all of those kids with the growth, it's not just from Yorktown Arch, it's from some of the neighborhoods. Country's going to be a prime example of one of these things. And there are the older neighborhoods, they're beginning.
And turn over.
Turnovers, so what are we going to see? That's hard to gauge, we just have to watch and see what we see out there with the number of young families.
I remember receiving that update last year where he was saying that empty nesters will be selling their homes to families in the next couple of years, and while enrollment may have been down in District Two and District Five, I think it will pick up.
Yeah, no doubt.
You're right.
There's no shortage of divisions.
Barbara?
I can go with option one for Yorktown Crescent for now. I think anytime, again, we start moving divisions or subdivisions with families already in them, you have to go with option two.
Yes.
No question. More importantly, I think that there is a need to have another elementary school, because we're just plugging up the dam, another hole's going to break through, and you're going to put another Band-Aid there, another hole. So you need a permanent place for bodies to go, and that's another building. So hopefully, it's imperative that that stays in the CIP where we have it. So that way, I think we can now take option two, because we know we got the, another elementary coming on, and truly have this committee to look at who's going to fill the new elementary school. And that's, and instead of jumping kids back and forth.
And I can support option one. I would just like to say publicly, this for the parents that are, you know, struggling with overcrowding at York Elementary, I mean, this is in no way designed to, to, this is simply a starting point. It's 27 less students that we have to move next year, is the way I'm looking at it. So this is just a starting point, this is just one small piece of the big problem. So we will continue to move on, and we're actually going to get into a little CIP discussion tonight, so.
Once we, once we get through this budget session, and we know where the county is with approving our CIP, then we can have a committee in place. To start looking at plenty of time.
Good. Thank you, Dr. James.
You're welcome.
We're going to move into operating budget.
Just don't come back with another community, please. You know, you keep adding community.
Run out of green space.
And when you want to drive the van one day, we can all get in and you can take us on a ride. Again, thank you all for your presentation on last Tuesday evening.
Okay, you want to take a break, or are we going to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, good. All right, Dr. George, board members, this evening, I'm going to present my FY17 proposed operating budget. Mr. Jarrett and I are going to work through this presentation covering a few topics. We're going to cover budget reductions, mandated and other budget expenditures, as well as anticipated revenue. We have carefully prepared a budget that is fiscally responsible and meets our most critical, the most critical needs of the division. Mr. Jarrett has the first couple slides, so I'm going to let him jump right in.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Let me first say, I really do love following a zoning discussion with budget. You know, usually, it's the budget that's got the unknown variables. Well, tonight, it's zoning. I feel like we've got a crystal ball here and there with the. I feel like we've got a crystal ball here and there with the budgets. So Dr. I passed the torch to give on the unknown variables. What we wanna do is walk you through a number of different areas tonight. First, we're gonna talk about some operating budget reductions. Then we're gonna talk about some operating budget increases. And then we're gonna review with you some revenue projections for next year. The information we're gonna be sharing with you tonight, it's gonna be information that's gonna be included in the superintendent's proposed budget, which is gonna be released most likely on Wednesday of this week. So it's, what we're really doing tonight is just doing a review of what's gonna be in that document. Let's first talk about the operating budget reductions. I wanna tell you a little bit about the process we used this year. We met with every budget holder in the division, okay? We had committee meetings with them and we sat down and we reviewed what their needs were. We reviewed their budget request. And we also looked at areas where we thought we might be able to, I guess you might say, squeeze some reductions out of the budget document. So a lot of what you're gonna be seeing tonight is a result of those meetings. And I think it's, it was a real positive thing for us to do, because number one, it gave those budget holders an opportunity to come in and talk about what their needs were. And then on the second side of that, it also gave us an opportunity to take a look at where we might have some areas for reducing the budget as well. Well, let's first talk about the attrition, okay? Attrition, if I can remind everyone, attrition is the savings that the school division enjoys. When we have turnover in a position and someone is hired in that position, that makes us a lower salary. So let me give the probably, the best example of that is a, say it, say we have a teacher at the top of the scale. And most likely when we replace that teacher, they come in at a lower level than the top of the scale. There's a budget savings with that. And so that's what we call attrition. And those savings can accrue to us in a number of different ways, not just in salary, but in fringe benefits as well. And so what we do is, we take a look at the attrition that we've actually accrued at any point in time as we start building the budget. And so this past year, we accrued approximately $600,000 for the attrition. So we've got that on the table as a reduction. The second line item is reduce the use of LEP tutors with new full-time positions. Now, let me explain that a little bit. We're under a federal requirement to hire fully qualified licensed staff to provide LEP services. Right now, we're doing a lot of that through the use of hourly tutors. So what we're able to do is, we're gonna be reducing the tutor compensation. In other words, reducing our reliance on part-time tutors to the tune of about $77,000. But I want you to remember that number, because you're gonna see another number later in this presentation where we're gonna be adding three full-time teachers. So there's gonna be a cost differential associated with that.
Dennis, can you just define for the public LEP?
Yeah, it's limited English proficiency. And we've had a tremendous increase in that category of student over the last probably three to four years. It's at least doubled. And that's where a student comes to us and can speak English, can read English. And so we have to provide services for those students to bring them up to the level that we need them to be, to function in our school division. We also are proposing elimination of participation in the advanced ed Saks accreditation program. The last time this was done, I believe, was three years ago, four years?
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, okay. In twenty twelve. And so we're up for that this upcoming year. And this proposal would be to not participate in that program in the next cycle. I understand that there are other school divisions looking at doing a similar thing as well, so we won't be by ourselves in this. The next one is a converting of a currently vacant position. It's the Coordinator of Licensed Professional Development. That position is now vacant. And taking that position and converting it to an Associate Director of Instruction. Now, that's gonna achieve really several things. More importantly, what it's gonna do, it's gonna take the position that the staff development component, it's gonna be one component that gets folded into the new Associate Director position, but it'll also absorb some of the positions, some of the job duties that are being right now handled by some of the directors in instruction. As you know, we've had a lot of reductions in staff at the school board office. And so they've had to pick up additional duties. And so what this would do, it was pull some of those duties back from them so they could work on other areas in the division. And so essentially though, you're gonna, it's a savings of $76,400 by freeing up the Coordinator of Licensed Professional Development. But again, you're gonna see another cost associated to another position. And the differential is pretty small though, when you, when you look at this. So that's another change in our programs, if you will, that we're proposing. And then we're looking at, our budgeted enrollment is projected to go down by fifty students. And as you know, whenever we have an increase, we always say, well, we need to add teachers. Well, if we're gonna use that same philosophy, if we're gonna, if our budget enrollment's going down, we should reduce some teachers. So that's effectively $102,000, which is two regular ed teaching positions. And then the last item is a reduction in fuel. School division has been extremely fortunate, as well as probably all of us around the pumps, with the lower fuel cost. And well, we are benefiting from that significantly as well. We are proposing that you take $90,000 from the fuel account and you put it into the bus replacement account. Now, we're trying to keep these funds in the same transportation category, because the theory is that at some point, the price of fuel is gonna go up. We just don't know when it, when it is. And when it does, we'll still have the funds in that category. If we need to shift them back to fuel, we can do that. So, but in the meantime, we'll be buying buses. And you may recall last year, as a part of the end of year, end of year closing process, we were able to take some of our fuel savings and buy buses. I anticipate us being able to do that again in fiscal year sixteen. So this is just a little preemptive planning for FY seventeen. Now, what's important about this, you take all of these reductions and you add them together, you're at about $957,000 in reductions. That is a significant number. When you look at the size of our budget and also you look at the number of resources that we have to add to, add new expenditures to the budget this year. So without these reductions, we would really be in a very, very difficult spot as we move forward. Okay, and now I wanna take a couple minutes to talk about mandated cost. We talked a little bit about this at your last work session. But one of the things that we have to deal with in education is, there seems to always be someone, someone who always wants to mandate something to us. And this year's no different. And we've got two mandates going on this year. First one is VRS, that's one we've dealt with a number of times in recent year, years. And right now, the governor recommends a 0.64% increase in the VRS rate. Okay, that translates into a cost of $371,000. That cost will be borne by the employer, not the employee. So the employee right now is paying 5% of their salary to VRS. That under this, under governor's proposal will stand in place and this increase will shift to the employer. The next four items are positions. And the governor's budget also includes an initiative, it's called an incentive program, that if we hire ten additional positions, ten additional instructional positions, then we are entitled to get roughly $386,000 in state revenue. So those are the ten positions that we have identified, if that proposal stays in place, that we would hire. I have to tell you, I was in, I was at a Virginia Association of School Business officials meeting on Friday. And the Assistant Superintendent for Finance at the state spoke. And there are a number of folks trying to get that initiative re-packaged, if you will, okay? And he also reiterated that it's been the direction they've been given. If it doesn't get repackaged, that they're gonna be extremely flexible on how you meet this. Because there's a number of school divisions in the state that have declining enrollment. And in that environment, under this current proposal, they would not be able to access these funds. Or even if you have stagnant enrollment and you're not adding staff, you know, you would not be able to access these funds. So it's an area where I think superintendents and school boards across the state will be talking a lot more about in the next weeks of the general assembly, especially once crossover comes about and we get a sense of where that's going.
Dennis, these ten positions that are mandated to the governor's recommended budget, would we have to have these positions anyway if the mandate wasn't in place?
Yes, sir, we, some of them we would. The special ed teacher and the paras and the limited English proficiency teachers, that's a yes. The regular ed para would not necessarily be required.
So even if they do something?
We've got, we've got, we've got an issue here, that's exactly right. And that cost, the total mandated cost, is $748,000. So that's a significant number of things you really don't have a lot of latitude to work with at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. All right, I'm gonna take over, I have a, wanna work through the next few slides. I'm recommending a step for compensation. I'm recommending a step for all staff, as well as a restored step for all eligible staff who've lost four steps. So if you remember last year, we were fortunate enough to restore one step for those staff members that were impacted by, that lost five steps. So I recommended that last year and the board ultimately approved that. That last item up on the slide there, we continue to struggle in the area of sub-bus drivers and bus driver assistants. Did I go too far?
Yeah, you need to go back a slide.
Thank you, Carl. Sorry about that, I double clicked. Again, the last, that last slide up there, we continue to struggle in the area of sub-bus drivers and bus driver assistants, and I'm recommending an hourly rate increase for those two areas. Our HR department conducted a market analysis of our comparator market per our strategic plan. And my recommendation is moving our YCSD cafeteria managers from G-10S to G-11S on the pay grade. So I'm recommending that for next year. Also, summer work is critical, is a critical time in our schools. Summer maintenance and custodial workers is an area which needs to be addressed. And I can share with you that this has been brought to my attention since I've been in the division for now almost a year and a half. It's been brought to my attention from multiple, multiple times by multiple groups. So I'm recommending an increased hourly rate for these positions as well. Also, another issue that can, we continue, that continues to challenge us is obtaining daily substitutes and homebound teachers in our school division. This directly impacts the ability of the division to provide services to students. And I'm recommending an hourly rate increase to these positions as well, as you can see on the screen. Our health insurance provider is Anthem, and they have requested that our health insurance rates increase by 17% next year, to the next planned year. However, my recommendation is that we access the cash reserves in the health insurance fund to cover 12% of that increase, while the school division will cover the 5% in the employer rate. However, I'm also recommending that the employee share of the 5% be passed on to employees. A few other cost implications looking for the budget for next year. I'm recommending the division pay for PSAT testing for all 10th graders. I'm also recommending converting, as you heard Mr. Jarrett talk earlier, about our professional development coordinator position to an associate director. This position will assume several K-12 duties from our elementary director and secondary, high school, I'm sorry, secondary director, as well as coordinating professional development. This will aid in increased support and coaching to our building principals by our level directors. There are requirements that our division's social worker attend meetings involved, involving our students with community agencies outside of contract time. So as you can see, I'm recommending that we add six days to our social worker to attend to that work. We also have one athletic director remaining who has five less days than our other three athletic directors. I'm recommending, recommending that we make that adjustment. For the next to the last item, we have a real need for the attendance officer to be 12 months. This position is critical to enrolling students, attending court dates of our students, out-of-zone placements and out-of-district placements. And all of this work occurs in the summer. And this position currently is 10 months and 15 days, so I'm making that recommendation moving forward. Also, I'm recommending an additional amount of funds to enhance training for our bus drivers, as well as our bus maintenance technicians. As you can see also up on the slide, that there's an estimated increased cost for new horizons. The estimated increase is now $100,000. Ground maintenance county shared service will remain the same. You can see a decrease in high school resource officers based on overtime usage. A slight increase in video services, which again is a county shared service. Emergency communication systems will stay flat. And finally, we'll add one replacement bus, but you'll note this corresponds to the $90,000 decrease in the fuel amount that Dennis referenced, that Mr. Jarrett has referenced early in the presentation. So with that, I'm now gonna turn it back over to Mr. Jarrett, and he is gonna cover our revenue.
Okay, now, Mr. Minister, do you have a question? Is your hand raised? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, now we're gonna take a look at how we're gonna, the proposal is to finance the expenditures that we just reviewed with you. And on the state revenue side, we've got the governor's proposed budget, which would provide $2.1 million worth of revenue. And I would remind you that that $2.1 million of that, $748,000 is included as mandated cost. Then looking at the federal side, we've talked about the Impact Aid reduction. And that's gonna, that's looking at eight point, it's going from 9.45 million to eight and a half million dollars. And again, that is an estimate, that's not anything that's set in stone, but it's based on the best information that we have available at this point in time. The Department of Defense heavily impacted funds is going down by $90,000. And then we, what's left is the two county proposed recommendations for increases in the county funding. And you've got two components there. The first one is the increase in the operations contribution. And you'll note that's $1.2 million. Now, that is the amount that superintendent would be recommending that the Board of Supervisors contribute as an increase to this proposed budget. The next item is, is one that's a little different than what we talked back, talked about in January. And it's the County Revenue Stabilization Fund transfer to the schools. Remember, that Revenue Stabilization Fund that we have is held by the Board of Supervisors. It's got about $5 million in it. And it's designed to assist us, if Impact Aid goes down, that we can use those funds to gradually ease into a new baseline projection. Well, Dr. Shandor and I met with the county administrator and some other staff last week, and there seems to be some, I guess you might say, willingness to bump that number up to $900,000. When we last talked, it was $700,000. And the thinking behind that is that it looks like we're gonna go over an Impact Aid this year, probably about $2 million, around $2 million. I don't know exactly how much it's gonna be yet. So if that occurs, then those funds would go to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. And so the $900,000 would not have a, that significant of an impact on the overall fund position. But I do wanna point out, what this means is, we are pushing this reduction out into the out years. Because if you look at it, Impact Aid going down by 950, the Revenue Stabilization Fund picks up 900 of that. So we've really only adjusted the budget by $50,000. And so that means that over those out years, there's gotta be more of a reduction, because we don't have unlimited funds in this Revenue Stabilization Fund. So that's kind of where, that is, that is at this point in talking with county staff. And so you see the total revenue increase is $3,236,000. So you have, really have to take that 3.2 million and add to it those revenue or those expenditure reductions. We have almost a million dollars, and that's how this total budget is being funded. Which means that if you look at the proposed budget for seventeen, it's at $132,182,475. Your current approved budget for FY sixteen is $129 million. So this equates to a two point, roughly $2.9 million increase, which is a 2.2% increase in the budget, which I think is a very moderate, modest, modest increase considering that, you know, that the school division has been under constraints for the last probably six to seven years. So it's really, really it's keeping it that same theme of keeping the budget within a modest increase.
We'll open it up for questions and comments?
I just have two quick questions. One was, Dr. Shandor, you are, and your recommendation including? One was, Dr. Shandor, you are, in your recommendations including the increase of a step per employees and a restored step.
Right.
Okay, good. And then what you're requesting from the county is a contribution, what percent is, you have the math on that?
It's probably.
Based on last year, this year?
It's probably about 2%.
About a 2% increase, okay.
I have a question, the health insurance fund, talking about transfer from the health insurance fund. How is that replenished again? How does the health insurance fund, how do we build that back up?
Well, this would not build the fund up, this would bring the fund down.
After we've done that, what, moving forward, because that, that fund is a, is a security blanket.
It is.
Being self-insured basically, I mean, we have, we need these resources to fall back on if we have to do it. So I'm just curious, how would we go about building that back up?
That's a good question, Dr. George, because the theory behind this cash reserve in this fund is to help us smooth out those years where we have big increases. And when those years we have modest increases, we hope to build up funds in that. So in theory, what would happen is in those years where the increases are not significant, then our rates would be set to a point where we could build the fund back up. But at, right now, the fund is around $6.8 million. If we bring this, this proposal on health insurance would, if, you know, and this is all, this is the, the unknown variable part of this. We don't know exactly how much the fund's gonna get pulled down, but actuarially, it looks like it's gonna be about $1.8 million. So that would bring the fund down to about $5 million. Our actuaries have said around the $5 to $5.5 million is a good range for this fund. So if everything worked out exactly the way the actuaries said it would, then we would be in a good position two years from now. Because this plan doesn't take effect until January, October 1 of 2016. But in those out years, if this fund gets, starts going down, then that's where you have to look at adjusting the rates and then you build the fund back up to provide that cushion that you need. And so that, and that, that's the whole theory behind having a cash reserve, is you use it to smooth the years out. So otherwise, when we would, in some of those years where we had the 20% increases, we would have done a 30% increase. And by not, by having this cash reserve, we are able to kind of soften some of that for the employee and the employer. And then it's, because remember, this is all based on estimates. And those estimates, if they don't come in and we've set those rates at a high rate, we've collected money from employees we probably didn't need to and the employer has paid into the fund they probably didn't need to. So we wanna be conservative about how we approach this.
Any question? This is Fran Mae. You, when this superintendent's proposed budget is this week, next week sometime?
This week.
This week. And as we continue to work with our counterparts, board supervisors to look at this. If we do not get the full funding we're asking for there, then we're, I want the public to understand, then we'll be back looking at our full budget, item by item. And I'm gonna guess that's how we're going to approach it. We haven't talked about that, whether it's gonna be zero, modified zero-based balance, however you do it. But we're gonna have to have a, a process in place, how we look at item by item and what goes. And that's, that's what I think the community needs to understand, because you've given us the rationale for why you're putting in what you're putting in. And if that doesn't happen, we go from there. The other question that I have, when you start talking about changing your positions, the licensed professional development position to the associate director of instruction, making changes. Do you have an organizational chart in place that shows from the, from where we are now and how the organizational chart will shift with these changes?
I have one for where we are now, I do not have one for where we'll be at. Once, once this moves through, then we'll absolutely have one to address that. I think it's important to note, those K-12 responsibilities that our elementary and secondary director currently have, again, I think we lost 21 positions in the last four years.
Four years.
Just at the county office alone, so we lost 21 positions. So again, the, the team has taken on numerous, numerous roles. So this is an effort to create this position so that they can do gifted LEP testing, ETFs, educational technology remediation along with professional development. So there's a number of roles and responsibilities under that one, one position. More importantly, for me, it's giving our level directors, giving them more time to go out and coach and support principals to work in those buildings.
I have one, oh, go ahead, Paige.
Can I direct this question to Mr. Jarrett?
Sure.
You know, at one time, because of not having sufficient funds, we did lease purchase of buses. Yes, sir. We got in pretty bad shape. I vaguely remember and I was wondering, at New Horizons, they got a real buy on air conditioning at their Woodside campus. Apparently, there was some contractor, some firm that did lease purchase where they could do roof and thing and they all had to pay. Can you do it with other things than buses?
Yes, sir, you can. You can do it with buses, you can do it with a lot of different things. Doesn't have to be buses, this can be, you can even do it for technology if we wanted to. But the, the danger in that is that you do build, there is a ongoing operating cost to pay the lease, the lease purchase of that. And so what happens is if you commit to doing that, then you're tying up other dollars that could be used for buying a bus or whatever in the following year. So basically, you get a one-time influx of this equipment and then those funds get then designated to pay the lease off over the next three to four years. But having said that, having said that, I would, I would like to also reiterate that we've made a lot of progress on our bus purchases in, in probably the last two years. We're using end-of-the-year rollover money. In fact, we've added, on the last procurement resolution, we had six buses, had it on for that. We bought, we had, we have enough funds to buy approximately three to four buses in our operating budget. We've purchased those this year. And we also are looking at these fuel savings again for this year, we used them last year. So we're gradually trying to make a dent into our replacement schedule, because, Mr. Minner, you're right. I mean, as of last year, we were about, beginning of the year, we were about 22 buses in the hole in terms of where we should be in our replacement schedule. We've made a good dent in that and I, I'm optimistic that I think we can, if we keep doing this incremental approach, we can maybe get this schedule caught up to date. But there does leave a gap, though, in the operating budget for the ongoing replacement of buses. So that continues to be a problem for us and, but it's not one that, I, I think that at this stage is, we just can't fit it into this budget process unless we wanted to increase the contribution request to the board of supervisors. And they're trying to be fiscally responsible about that approach as well.
I had a question about the revenue stabilization fund. You said it's increasing from, to $900,000 from $700,000 and there's $5 million in there now. But you said it could be kicking the can down the road in the future. How, how worried are you about that?
Well, you know, I, I'm not as concerned as I would be if Congress had not approved the budget early this year. They did, they approved the budget, not on time, but they did in December. So, and they actually increased impact aid funding. If I thought there was any potential at this point, and please, I, I feel like I'm, you put me on the spot.
He said you had the crystal ball.
I don't have the crystal ball for this. I mean, this, this is the area where, I mean, it's really a hit and miss kind of thing. However, what I would say is that assuming that impact aid does not suffer any reductions, I think it's reasonable to use our reserve fund to offset this over the next three years, that 900, not what's left of, that $900,000.
Have we ever tapped into that fund before?
Not for this purpose, not for this. We have for some one-time expenditures, but not for this purchase, purpose. We have already gone over our impact aid allocation this year by $400,000. We have already done, from all of these prior year payments that they're making. They've made payments all the way back to fiscal year 10 to us. And so they're catching up on that. That's why this is gonna go down. This has nothing to do with the funding formula itself. That's not why impact aid is going down. It's because the number and the amount of prior year payments will be dropping in those out years. So, Ms. Kurski, I can tell, I, I don't want you to come back three years from now, it's like, well, wait a minute, because I don't know what's gonna happen, you know.
You have to make a decision with the information you have at the time.
You do, you do. And right now, and looking at the trend in this, the trend, impact aid actually fared fairly well during even all the budget crises that took, that took place at the federal government. During the sequester, most of the sequester of impact aid got restored that next year. So impact aid, you know, this is one of those programs that gets bipartisan support. It's about quality of life issues for our military and everybody is for that. And so it, it kind of gets preferential treatment, if I might say, in Congress and, and so we've enjoyed that for years. And I don't think that's gonna change, but I don't know what's around the corner, I just don't, so.
If it continues to think about downsizing the military and some of the support facilities around here, it'll have a great impact.
You know, Mr. Minner, that's a good point, thank you for raising that, because that's the other piece of this and that's the number of federally connected students we have. And that has been somewhat stable over the last several years. And, but if we had a major base realignment or something that took place that pulled students out, you're exact, then that would have another impact on us. So there's a lot of variables we have to look into.
I just have, I just have, I'm glad to see that some adjustments are being made through your recommendations, Mr. Superintendent, on substitutes, this summer employment of most of our people that come in.
License, do you?
I assume SEDEXO will make adjustments for staff that manage our cafeterias that are on their payroll versus the ones on our payroll.
I, I'm not aware of what SEDEXO's doing. Dr. James, are you aware of any information?
Because we're just speaking about our county, our employees, not SEDEXOs.
Right, so they're.
And majority of the managers, I don't know the ratio of our managers versus SEDEXO managers. But I think the last count, we had 25, 27 employees that were our employees and about six or some that were SEDEXO.
Do we know how those salary scales compare?
I can get you the information, I hate to quote it without giving the direct confirmation of the comparison of our salary scales to SEDEXO.
The one thing I don't see on here that really, it wasn't a discussion, so don't get me wrong, but as I'm going through and looking at, you have evaluated areas where there needed to be some adjustments made and you tackled those, which is commendable. Para educators, that backbone, the, the, the system, in some cases, to keep things from going in total chaos into the classrooms of which the teachers teach. These people come with many times a lot of credentials, but they choose to work in that position of a parent. And then I know we've made adjustments for the ones that work in the different areas of being a parent educator, with special, special education. So I didn't know if you looked in that area to say, are we marketable or do we need to find adjustment there? And I open that can of worms because they are such a value to YCSD and they're good people with a, matter of fact, you just highlighted one that came across the airwaves.
Very true.
So just wanted to mention that. I don't know if there's, what that cost or even what that recommendation would be.
I don't have that information with me this evening.
It's just something I thought about that if it wasn't looked at, maybe just take a quick look at it and see if there, there's maybe an area that, that needs to be considered. And if it doesn't come up this year, at least the out years.
Under your budget increase, you had an increased attendance officer's contract from 10 months plus 15 days to 12 months. Is that for one person that's $23,000 or it, how many?
Yes.
Just one, one person? A month and a half is $23,000?
I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. Jarrett.
Yes, that's what, that's what it came, the calculation that was done by HR that came from the table. So that's basically, that does seem like a lot, now that you mention that. I think that's something that should be, I think that should be looked at. I don't, I'm not sure what her salary is right now, so that's something that should be looked at.
That's, that's more than a parent educator makes a year?
We can double check that number, but I'm sure that would be including compensation.
Fines and benefits.
Right.
Well, we're off and running.
Any other questions on this presentation?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jarrett, Dr. Shandor.
Okay.
We have one left with the CIP, does anybody need a break or? Good to go? All right, Dr. Shandor.
All right, thank you, Dr. George. Board members, for our final presentation of the evening, we've had, we had some conversation at the joint session with board supervisors regarding the CIP. So we wanted to provide some information to you this evening regarding that. So, Dr. James, if you can just hit that button for that first slide. So looking at our capital improvement program, you'll notice on this slide that it's up here, we wanna bring your attention to FY '17, '18, and '19, that first row. That's what our school, that's what you all, the school board approved for those three years. The second row under FY '17, '18, and '19, it says county senior staff proposed funding. And that is the county side, that's what they've proposed thus far for funding. As you can see on the last line there, there's a significant difference under FY '17, '18, and '19. So this evening, we wanna have a discussion with you, I'm gonna ask Mr. Sheehart, if Mr. Sheehart can come to the podium. And, Dr. James, we're gonna talk you through, and you, and you have some handouts as well that we're gonna put up on the screen. This is just one example, one scenario of if this is, if this ends up how we're currently funded, some of the, the challenges that we'll face as a school division that I referenced the other evening in the joint session on some of those projects and we'll have to move back further in the CIP.
Before he jumps in, so this is, these recommendations are from senior county staff, their proposals are not board of supervisor?
They're not board of supervisor and they're not Mr. Morgan.
Okay, thank you.
Right, correct. All right, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Jarrett.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As you may suspect, the reduced funding levels recommended by the county senior staff may require adjustments to the number of projects and when, when projects are placed in the CIP. This spreadsheet demonstrates one possible scenario for the CIP based on funding, reduced funding levels. The redlined out numbers indicate the original placement of the project in the school board approved CIP. The green numbers indicate the new placement in this scenario. The numbers in black indicate number, indicate projects that are remaining in the, in the recommended location. As you can see, most projects were moved out at least two years and some even further. As you remember, one of the, one of the things, one of the major impacts here is the new technology that we had discussed in previous meetings about the roofs and coating the roofs rather than replacing the roofs every 20 years. One of, one of the major impacts with this, moving these projects out, is that we may have to move the roof out so far that we cannot coat the roofs, we may have to go ahead and replace the roofs. One of these in particular is Root High School. It will cost us an additional $1.5 million to replace the roof rather than coating it when we get to Root, if we, if we cannot coat it. The roof deteriorates over time and if it deteriorates far enough, we will, we cannot coat it, we have to replace it. So if you, Dr. James, if you'll scroll down there in Root, in FY '17, I'll just touch on these here. You see the first project there that we're having to move out, is the Tab Elementary, being an air conditioning replacement. And that is what, $4,000, $4 million, $4 million, $50,000 project, we moved it from FY '17 out to FY '19. Down a bit further and on the sheet there, you can see Tab Elementary School is replacing the windows and doors. This is a $600,000 job, a $600,000 project, we don't have the funding for that based on the, based on the funding amounts we have available from the, from the county senior staff. And you see we moved that out additional two years as well. Move down a little further. Next few projects there are Coventry Elementary, this is replace the windows and security vest, and install the security vest to build there. These windows are in the same condition as the ones that were at McGruder that we replaced this last summer. The moisture between the glass, the, the failure of the thermal efficiency of the windows is gone and the windows look, pretty much, some of the windows look awful in that building. Tab, Tab Elementary, we're recommending moving this roof out from FY '17 all the way out to FY '22, just because of the funding requirements. And then the next one down there is Coventry Elementary School and then we're moving, recommending moving this roof out to, from FY '17 out to FY '20. One of the differences between those two roofs, even though the Tab Elementary roof is older, it is an aluminum roof and it is not rusting, whereas the roof at Coventry is beginning to rust.
Mr. Sheehart, can I ask you a question while you're there? With the Coventry roof, would that be coated or replaced?
It would be replaced somewhere where we get at McGruder.
Okay.
The next project here, it's the kitchen replacement, kitchen equipment replacement. If you remember, in past meetings, we've been, past CIPs, we've been replacing some of the kitchen equipment, some of the kitchen equipment is in excess of 30 years old and we've been slowly replacing that. This is just in the third step or third phase of replacing that kitchen equipment, but due to the funding restraints, we moved it out all the way to FY '22. due to the funding restraints, we moved it out all the way to FY '22. And here we have Tab High School. We painted the entire building. Now, this building was painted back in '98 when they renovated the building, so it was painted 18 years ago, but we're having to recommend moving that out to FY '19. Now, right below that, you see Grafton Complex, we painted the entire building there. And you notice we've moved one project in the entire CIP forward, and that's from FY ' '18 to FY '17. And the reason for this is Grafton Complex is 20 years old and it hasn't been painted yet. So it has a 20-year paint job on there and it's definitely past due. Then if you look down here, the next project down there is Tab Middle School. Again, we're recommending moving that project out to FY '20. It is also painting the entire building. Tab Middle School was renovated in 1999, 2000, so it is 16 years old. It's probably due for a paint, it is due for painting now, too, but we're recommending to have to move that out. Now, Dr. James, if you could go down to the bottom, I believe that was the last project we moved out. Yes, it was. And that was a total of eight projects we had to move out from FY '17. Now, Dr. James has further information on FY '18 and FY '19 funding.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehart. As you can see, there are some challenges for us now going forward with the CIP with the level of refunding from the county senior staff recommendation. Let's actually look at the number of projects. Mr. Sheehart talked about eight projects that were moved from FY '17 to outer years. I can tell you that in the six years of this CIP, the county is recommending six years. For us, we typically do 10 years for planning purposes. But in those six years, based on the level of funding that Dr. Shandor talked about, there are going to be 61, 61 projects that have to be moved to outer years. And you can see here in the particular years here on the particular slide, the number of projects each year that are going to be moved forward if we stay at the funding levels that Dr. Shandor talked about earlier. The good news is the elementary school is still in. We're looking at funding for A&E and land acquisition in '17. But the other part of this, the county senior staff is recommending funding the construction dollars in two fiscal years, in FY '18 and FY '19. This is new for us. This is going to be a challenge because most often, when a contractor bids on a project and he gets his subs in place and he lines out his schedule for the project, he knows the funding is available so that he can schedule the project. This way, when you look at the split of the funds, is there going to be an ending point in one fiscal year where work stops because he's ahead of schedule before you start the second phase because the funding is available? This is a challenge, and there also may be other procurement issues that are yet to be discovered, but right now, the school is still in. However, the funding of the construction dollars, typically it's only in one year because we know it's going to take two years to build that school. So when you get a contractor, you plan your schedule, you know what you're working through, so you can have a good day of to know the building should be ready for occupancy by this date. And this is the senior county staff recommendation. Don't know where we go from here, however, it is a concern with...
We've got two major concerns. One is we have shifted how we take care of our buildings.
Yes, ma'am.
So our buildings are going to start going down. That's one issue.
Yes.
Then the other one is we've got kids to put someplace, and we are not going to have a smooth transition to get a school built to move somebody.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's...
What is the reasoning for splitting the funding for the new elementary school? Do we know?
Let's get started, Mr. President.
Yeah, the reasoning is that they want to spread the cost of the school out over two years instead of one. And that's ultimately the background as to why they've split it up. Typically, when we do a construction project, we budget for the full amount. In a year, we sign a contract for the full amount, and then the project progresses as fast as we can get it done. But this is a, this is a bond, a bond issue matter, and they're trying to split it out over two years. And as Dr. James pointed out, one issue, and frankly, we would, last thing we would see happen is this project not be able to proceed expeditiously because we don't have the appropriation in that year to do it, so we don't know how that's going to play out at this point.
That's the part where I was, I mean, I've been doing this for 16 years. Barbara, you've been on board a lot longer than I have, and Paige. And sometimes you hate to bring up the fact we've been here for a while, but this time, I'm going to throw that coin because our staff, from Jim Wilkens' days to Sheehart's days, to the work that y'all put into working with engineers, architects, and professionals that come in and evaluate things, and our own self-evaluation of our buildings, and the plan in which you bring to us as a board through the CIP project to, whether it's a window replacement, whether it's to, you know, replace a roof or an HVA, or in this case, to build a new elementary school, it's all done, in my mind, very strategically. It's, in some cases, very detailed in how you decide when. You're even monitoring, self-monitoring things to where you've come to us and said, let's move this a year because it's functioning just fine. So when we go to, when that final document that we sent to the county as our proposed CIP, it's been gone through. It's not like we're just throwing something across the table going, here, y'all take a look at it and see what you think. So I have grave concern about senior staff coming back with a recommendation that's now directing our staff to go back and make some difficult decisions that have already been made to start with before the document went that direction. So, and now to sit there and look at the fact that they could put us in a situation where a three-year school project could become four, or slowed down, or whatever, before those doors could open because of stretching that out. We've never seen that done before. That's the first. This has a lot of concern. This right here, I would encourage Dr. Shandor to keep having conversations with the county administrator. We need to have conversations with our counterparts because we have 19 buildings, and we're about ready to have 20. And last meeting, you talked about the age. Comment was made that it's not really the age of the buildings. You know, there's 100-year buildings or... Yes, there is. We're in a rather old building right now, call it forecall, but it's how it's maintained, and that's what keeps them going. If we start slipping, then we're going to have issues.
Mr. Member, one thing I would like to point out, this is not the county administrator's proposal.
Exactly.
Okay, this is senior staff.
What's the likelihood that the county administrator will accept his senior staff's recommendation?
I can't say.
And when you say senior staff, are you talking about number crunchers? Are people who know how to build a school or a building?
Well, Dr. James was on this committee. He was on the committee then, so I'll let him speak.
Right, on the committee was the assistant county administrator, Mark Carter, well, the deputy county administrator, the other, Vivian McGedigan, and also other senior staff members for each department, Fire, Life, Safety, Parks and Rec, the library, several of us were on that committee.
I guess I'm looking at how the funding for the new school is separated, and I'm thinking, well, how did they come up with 13.8 the first year, 9.2 the second year? I mean, you build the school, but, oh, we're out of funds, we can't put the roof on. I mean...
I can't answer that question. I don't know if, can you answer the question?
Also, did senior staff walk out of schools? Or are they sitting behind a desk and crunching numbers? Have they been out to visit all 19 schools when they make this recommendation?
If I could respond to that, part of the senior staff working through the recommendation was look at the county projects and see in which year they would be funded or not. As far as us, it was no looking at projects and moving them, it was just eventually, a number came to us for each fiscal year. And then from each fiscal year, we came up with the scenario that's been presented tonight, that that's going to be the level of funding. So there wasn't a saying, put the school in, move the roof, do this, do that. That wasn't the case. That was done with the county projects.
They gave you a figure.
Right.
And you had to decide and make some really different... Now, the school concept of moving that, that was their idea?
Well, it's the level of funding each fiscal year. So the dollars that's going to be needed to build the school can't be done in one and two years when we had planned with A&E and land in '17, and then all the construction dollars in '18. The money for the school was basically placed in two fiscal years when you look at the amount in each fiscal year.
Dr. James, a part of this that, a lot of it concerns me, but when I look in here and I see anything that has security associated with it, security camera installation has been bumped back two years from '18 to '20. These other things, and I don't know if there's, replace card access control system, it's a security issue, correct?
Yes, right.
Reorient main offices for security?
Yes.
Coventry, replace windows and security vest.
Right, yes. To install once it was, once finished.
Yorktown offices for security. And Tab Elementary, replace windows and doors. I don't know if the doors is a safety issue or if it's just an eyesore, but anyway, you know, we stayed in our strategic plan, how we emphasize security and the safety of our kids and our students. And I just don't think we should be put in a position where we have to take things that are possible safety and security issues and compromise on this. And I think whoever, you know, whoever needs to know, they need to know that. I just think, you know, moving forward, we've got to look, we've got to look at that. I remember talking about these cameras, what, three years ago or something?
Yes.
Whatever it was.
All of these projects have advanced up over the years. We used to have a 10-year CIP. Now we're going to have a six-year. We started 10 years ago moving these projects up. So yes, you've seen these projects over and over again for many years as they've progressed up to where they are now.
I realize, you know, we're going to have to make some adjustments. This is life the way it is, but I think when it comes to safety and security, we need to, we need to really rethink that and put it front and down. So we're certainly going to be relying on y'all to tell us when that's compromising, something that we're not about.
I'm also concerned about the replacement of the HVAC systems at the schools, having to push that off. I know at the Grafton Complex, they've had issues because they have so many heat pumps. So in these extremely cold days, a lot of times, teachers and the students are wearing coats because the heat pumps go out. So, I mean, we have critical needs, and I guess I've become frustrated because I feel like the county has stamped approval on every housing request that's come across the table, even if their zoning commission did not approve it or did not recommend it. So we're not building a new school or asking to build a new school because we just want a new building. We're doing it because of the growth in the northern part of the county.
You're almost at a point of saying, it's either taking care of the buildings that we have or the schedule that we have, or a new school. And you have to stop and think, what are you better at?
That's right.
Keeping what you got and improving and keeping that tip-top and just increasing the number of students in your building.
That's exactly right.
Forget the new school.
Exactly right.
It's either or.
That's exactly right, Miss Haywood. You're kind of put into a position of deciding a priority here. Is it the new school or is it maintaining your facilities?
Maintaining what we have and all the new developments coming in. We just make our classes larger.
Which is going to upset the families who live here and who are moving into the county, or it may make them reconsider moving into the county if they think, well, their classrooms are overcrowded.
It's almost like putting up a big sign, you don't want to move into York County.
And I'm concerned that it could cost more in the long run if we cannot maintain our buildings.
We've made the decision for years to maintain our buildings really well and on a schedule and not, not build great big new schools every chance we get. I mean, this has been a decision, a conscious decision to approach it this way, and I think it's worked well, but it's, you know, you don't expect it to come back and backfire at some point and say, hey, oh, by the way, I know you've done a great job being frugal in maintaining your buildings. Once again, this is not a, this is not a county, this is not a county proposal. This is just senior staff.
Correct. So again, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. Last Tuesday, when I, was it last Tuesday?
Yes, yes.
Last Tuesday, when I expressed my concern about if our budget is reduced, I had significant concerns over that. This evening was an opportunity for staff to put through and say, hey, here's one scenario. So essentially, you've got a view this evening of what would that look like if that's where we are. I think we were faced with significant challenges ahead, and I think Miss Haywood, and all of the comments made this evening are, you know, we're going to be put in a position where we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And it's not finalized yet, but again, I think this evening was a good opportunity for us to provide that information to you.
And the piece that I want to make sure for even people at home, what you brought to us is your recommendation of how we change our CIP based on the net amount of money each year the county says or the senior staff is proposing to give us.
I think just one scenario to achieve the funding levels that Dr. Shandor spoke about.
Yeah.
Maybe, listen to the conversation, are there any other options? What are going to be priorities in those options to meet those funding levels? And many times, as we work through this, the project that we really wanted to do, we could place it in a potential fiscal year because it was above the limit. And one thing that's going to be faced with, if we don't build a new elementary school and we have the children, we have the students here, we're built out.
You are putting a mobile unit at McGruder Elementary, and if you walk out the back of that building, it's going on the basketball court, but you're bound by a fire station and a power pole, whatever that...
Cell tower.
Cell tower.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and then the question that I had today was, how are the kids getting from the bus to the mobile units? Well, they're going to have to go into school, and they cannot walk to the mobile units by themselves, so you've got to have an adult to take them, whether it's to inside, to pull out specialty class, or to lunch, or to PE. So where that unit is going, it's the only place on the school grounds for it to go.
Yes.
But it's...
Creates some challenges.
Major challenges.
And it's not as simple as just rezoning the entire county because you said there are new developments approved for in the Dare area, in the Seaford area, the school districts that we would consider putting the overcrowding conditions from Yorktown. So it's much more difficult than just rezoning.
Yes.
Dr. George, just, I want to just make a comment because normally, at this point in the game, we're working with the challenges of an operating budget. We're really, and over the past five to six years, we've been very, a lot of distractions as we work through some difficult decisions with an operating budget. Now, this is the first time I can remember where now a distraction might be driven from two sources or two points, and that's going to be a proposed CIP that we voted on and put out and could come back. And now we have challenges that can be multifaceted here to deal with, which is disheartening. But we're not there yet because it's just a senior county staff recommendation or discussions. Hopefully, the public will look and pay attention a little bit more to the CIP. Where in the past, maybe, CIP system documented has kind of floats and rolls, and people don't really pay maybe a lot of attention to that because we're focused on the operating budget and requests, oh, maybe this is the year that more input from this, from both documents at this point. So people understand that some things will not take place if it's not funded as our plan moving along was, we thought was going to be funded, so.
I also hate to pit one district against another district or one school against another school, but that's what you see going on in the CIP when you say, well, if you want to build a new school, then you're having to let your maintenance projects go down the road a few years. And then the people who have children in those schools are thinking, well, why didn't I get a new roof? Why didn't I get a new HVAC system? Why didn't I get new security measures? You know, why am I paying for that when I've been here, living here, paying my taxes? Why do I not get the upkeep on my school building?
Dr. James, I know it's very unfortunate. It's kind of always been like this because you and staff have had to make decisions on what was going to fail today, tomorrow, the next day, how the CIP needs to set up. And I said maybe we had to just try to keep it going. You know, the thing is me, if the county... You know, the thing gets me is the county staff, I don't know whether it's ever come up with their buildings have fewer people in them than our buildings. And if they're trying to look at our school like their buildings, then the wear and tear is far insignificant. We have a lot more people going through, a lot bigger buildings, a lot more plumbing, HVAC. And I don't know whether that's ever come up. Do you realize, you know, we've got a different animal here from what you have sitting down in this building?
That children benefit. Thanks.
You're exactly right. Because one example, a door with 200 students, how many times does it go on a cycle each day? With 1,200, 1,200 students, how many times does it cycle? And every time it cycles, you know, that's where it tears. You see that in several things that we talked about when it comes to builders and what we're forced to do. One thing that stays in my mind, and I don't want to think about this, when I was an assistant principal at Tab High School, I wish I could find the pictures, probably one of the yearbooks, I have a picture of me with the student with an umbrella and a locker so he could read his books, lockers, of that much water was kind of in. This story is here, might take us back where we were in the 90s. Many of you that were on the board remember where we were in the 90s. But in the 90s, we also took care of the buildings. We also built two schools, a complex, which has funding.
Principal today gave the example of a bathroom, three stalls, number of students in the building. Each commode maybe is flushed 50 sometimes during the day. I don't remember exact numbers. And you have to stop and think about that. Now, think of a child, a lot of paper in the commode, and he may clog up or whatever, getting kids to think like that. So, but you never thought about it like that in terms like that, about how often you use something in a school like that.
Yeah, Dr. James, I don't know whether you remember the Framwell Field, the commercial building mechanic, says, "Pay me now, pay me later."
Yeah.
That's true. I mean, a whole lot of-
Dr. James, was there any discussion that group met about tackling some of these projects using revenue sources at one time, you know, a reserve fund the county may have or rainy day fund, I guess in some cases it's called, or anything like that?
There was some discussion about how do you fund the projects, whether it's by borrowing or using what happens monies or general operating budget. There were those kinds of discusses. And that was perhaps the county side on how they would fund those projects. Because many projects say, "Well, no, we don't need to fund it this way. Maybe this is a candidate to be funded this way or look for grants funds out there to fund them." Especially some of the road projects, and those were some of the county projects. Because they're matching from the state, also with the road projects, to take advantage of that.
And we've had conversations with Mr. Morgan and senior staff regarding creating a capital reserve fund as well. So we've had, we had that conversation at the joint meeting last Tuesday, as well as Mr. Jarrett and I had a meeting on Thursday with their staff. And we're certainly going to pursue some of those opportunities.
That'd be a long-term solution.
Yeah, it's certainly not going to pay any projects right now. It's not going to help us with the problem we have now, but-
Good idea.
Can it help us moving forward? Absolutely.
In that meeting with senior staff, I'm going to piggyback from Paige real quick. Were you asked to give your opinion or you were just able to sit there and take the information they presented and the amount of money? Did they want your opinion on what changing, what the amount in each year would do to us?
Right. There wasn't a discussion about the funding coming to the school board based on our request. We shared our projects in the years in which they were approved by you. What we really looked at individual projects was on the county side and which ones would be funded in '17 or '18 and move out down the line years out. But it wasn't the same detail done with the school division CIP as it was with the county CIP.
I have a question about the $670,000 that's in the FY 16 CIP for the expansion of the cafeteria at Yorktown Elementary. Does that entire amount move over to FY 17?
Yes, do you have those dollars available to do that project at Yorktown Elementary? Because that $16 that was already funded, you know, we're speaking of 17 forward funding.
So that will go into FY 17? I know it's on FY 16 on this.
You know, that's what Mr. Sheehardt spoke about at the last board meeting, about if it moves forward with the architects, we'll come up with plans that we can go out to bid later on in the summer and do that in summer 17.
So we have that money, so will it then just be put on the FY 17?
No, it's 16.
It just carries over?
It carries over, but it's $16.
All right. Anybody else?
I think so.
We had a nice meeting this evening. I've discussed a lot, kind of tip of the iceberg, I think, some of this. I think we've got a nice relationship moving forward with our counterparts. And I think we need to continue in that vein, having open dialogue as much as possible. And I know you're doing a lot of that behind the scenes. We're trying to do some of that too. So think positive and keep moving forward. Anybody else? If not, we're adjourned.